So I'll take the role, Councilor Pete's old here. Uh, Councilor Smallwood.
Here.
Councilor Hamblin.
Um, not here yet.
Not here yet. Okay. Counselor Lee.
Here.
Counselor Exner.
Here.
Counselor Schultz.
Here.
Mayor Pulliam.
Here.
Uh, Fair Chief Snyder.
Here.
And Executive Director Jones.
Here.
All right. Good evening. I'll, uh, everybody, I'll go through our city council, um, agenda tonight when we kind of kick off our second half of work sessions because this is kind of our distinct work session as the Sandy Urban Renewal Board. Uh, the reason behind convening is here, uh, this group, uh, formation voter, uh, survey results. Um, obviously we were going heavily down the, who that is. Uh, Jeff, can you maybe mute everybody until we call on?
Sure.
On them. So while, uh, while Jeff does that, uh, so you know, we've been quickly going down this road to, uh, investigate the viability of put uh, for parks, rec aquatics. Uh, so this is our most recent, uh, survey results. Oh, like I was muted and unmuted, but, uh, so this is our most recent, uh, survey results for last survey where we went into the field with some concrete proposals that actually tied in some battery information with that. Um, we have, I, I, I see you guys over there ready for the presentation, but, uh, perhaps Jordan, I'll go ahead and let you kick us off on, uh, what we're doing here, um, with our urban renewal, uh, meeting that get the survey results. We're gonna have to unmute Jordan.
Sorry about that. Um, actually first on the agenda is a small business emergency grants, um, that.
Oh, I apologize.
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, and this is an item for the urban renewal board. Um, one is it, it kind of expands upon what we already do with our urban renewal, uh, program, and that's providing, um, uh, loans and grants or, uh, grants to small businesses, uh, in Sandy and their regional district. Um, and two, it, it involves the use of urban renewal funds as one of the funding sources for, uh, the program. So, um, David has been working hard with, uh, um, you know, the, the work group that was formed to review the different options and the council study this at, uh, the previous, um, council meetings. Uh, so, um, I think, uh, I think that we're all pretty proud of the work that we've done and scrambling and putting this together. Um, and I'll let David go ahead and outline what the criteria is and funding levels and sort of how the process would work uh, for this program.
Dave, go ahead and unmute yourself. Or I can, I can do it. You should be good.
Okay. Everybody hear me? Okay. All right. So, um, this program, uh, is, um, set up to distribute, uh, seventy-five thousand dollars in funding from the city to small businesses in form of grant program. Um, fifty thousand dollars of this is coming from the urban renewal board, which is why we're in front of you tonight. Twenty-five thousand of it will come from, um, general fund, a little bit from, uh, our contingency and a little bit from, uh, use, uh, and the leftover funds from the, uh, from the nonprofit grant program we have with the city. Um, so, um, looking at the funding, uh, we, the group pretty much looked at two options uh, for awards, five thousand dollars or three thousand dollars. Um, the, uh, the work group opted to go with, uh, three thousand dollar award so we could give out more awards. That gives us the opportunity to give out twenty-five grants instead of fifteen. Um, and, uh, while not, uh, as much of an award, it's still, um, a very usable, uh, amount of money for some of these businesses, um, that they can use for a number of different things. Um, I, I had mentioned to, um, the members of the group a while ago that, uh, we can use, uh, we need to be mindful of, um, you know, the seventy thirty split on that. It actually, uh, seventy percent of the funding coming from urban renewal, thirty percent, um, coming from, uh, coming firm and set aside for businesses outside of the urban renewal district. Um, really all we need to worry about is that we spend a minimum of seventy percent of the funds. We can spend ninety-five percent of the funds in the urban renewal district if we want to. We can spend, uh, general fund money on that. We just can't go below the seventy percent. And I think that would be difficult for us to do anyway, as most of our businesses are within the urban renewal district. So, uh, there are four categories for the grants. Um, the first is eating and drinking establishments. That's basically any, any restaurant out there. Uh, well, it's restaurants, coffee shops, taverns, bars, breweries and wineries. Um, and it excludes groceries for obvious reasons. Uh, chain restaurants, which we, I, uh, which we define as any restaurant having more than twelve locations. And, um, and food carts, because the food carts seem to be going pretty strong right now. Um, it doesn't seem like their businesses dipped that much. The second category is personal services. This includes things like hair salons, barber shops, medical and dental offices, uh, spas, masseuses, tattoo parlors, nail salons, gyms and health clubs. Um, it excludes professional services, um, things like tax accounts, financial services, real estate professionals, architects, engineers, lawyers, um, because most of these people are working from home. Uh, and, uh, and it excludes mental health, um, providers for the same reason predominantly. Um, the third category, and this is kind of a, a mashup, is indoor entertainment and childcare businesses. Um, there was a comment by, uh, staff made, um, a couple of days ago that we should consider, um, adding childcare businesses to this list. Uh, the response to that was overwhelming every, uh, there were no, there was nobody in opposition and I got maybe ten, uh, and messages in agreement with that. So we went ahead and added that. We didn't want to include it as its own category because we have set a rule of, uh, a, a minimum of two grants to each category. And there are only three childcare businesses that, um, fall into this category. So, um, we combined that with the other, uh, category of businesses that had the smallest number of potential applicants. Um, and then the file category is general retail, uh, and that includes all categories of small retail shops, hardware stores, um, Sandy chainsaw would, but, um, would be, uh, under that category, cell phone providers, uh, archery and firearm stores, apparel stores, any, any kind of general retail, basically. Um, let's see. Moving on to grant criteria. Pardon me for just a second. Um, the work group opted for, uh, maximum flexibility and how to distribute these awards rather than, uh, go for a bunch of criteria, uh, a bunch of specific criteria because they wanted to have the maximum amount of flexibility available, uh, to consider, uh, different businesses. There are two criteria involved. The first is that, um, uh, businesses that have outstanding, uh, payments to business license or transit tax, uh, are not eligible. Um, business license dues for twenty twenty were due on February fifth, I believe. So, um, as of right now, they'd be two and a half, almost two and a half months to link with on that. Um, if they haven't paid and, uh, transit tax, um, for those quarterly filers, um, they would have been due, uh, on January first. Uh, so they'd be farther behind than that. And for annual filers, um, we can't use the twenty nineteen tax year because, um, the, uh, because tax day was moved to July fifteenth, and so technically those, um, aren't due yet. So we're, we only looked at the twenty eighteen full tax year. This, this will not probably exclude too many businesses. I would say, uh, I identified on the business license list, maybe ten businesses that were, um, that could apply that wouldn't be eligible because of this. Uh, transit taxes a bit more than, there's a bit more, a few more businesses on that list. But, um, most of, but there's less than that as far as people who would qualify with, for this program. So I don't think it's that particular criteria is going to affect a lot of people. Um, the other criteria is the number of employees the business employs. And, uh, the group decided that, um, ten employees or fewer would be given preference in this program because it's a small business assistance program. So we really want to, um, focus more on small businesses. Um, the application process, um, tonight obviously is the first step in that direction, uh, looking for urban renewal and council approval of the program. Um, from there, we have a pretty tight timeline. Um, we have, um, from now until, uh, the beginning of Wednesday to publicize this program. Um, that is a very short period of time, but I think we can do it. Um, the way we will go about publicizing this is, uh, first of all, on, on all of our, uh, media, the city's website news feed, uh, the city's, uh, economic development page will have a link to it. Um, and then the chamber has been gracious enough to, um, help us out, um, by doing an e-blast and, and making sure that this gets out to, uh, the people that they can contact as well. There's two other, um, things that I thought would be, you know, a good idea to do to make sure that everybody is aware of this program. The first is, I will send a direct email using email, uh, addresses from the city's business license list to all businesses that could, uh, potentially apply for this, telling them that it's available and with the link to the application. And then I'm also going to put together, uh, a, a, a very brief one-page flyer, um, that I'm, uh, planning on handing out to, um, uh, going around and, uh, distributing to the restaurants. The, all of those things together, I think we can get the word out pretty effectively. And, um, these businesses are talking to each other quite a bit from what I can tell. Chris, would you agree with that? So I think the word's going to get around really quick. I've already gotten three calls today about how do I apply? So, um, I, I, I think they're, uh, they're, they, they know about this and they're ready for it. Uh, the application period will open at eight o'clock AM on Wednesday morning and be open until five o'clock PM on Friday. Uh, well, we will look at every application that comes in. This is not first come, first served. We're going to look at all applications equally. And then, uh, the following week, April twenty-seventh to May first, uh, will be, um, set aside for us to, uh, get a couple of, um, sessions to sit down and, uh, figure out who our, uh, grant awards are going to go to. Uh, I'm trying to, um, organize that right now. And I think, uh, we, we shouldn't have too much trouble, uh, getting the five of us together via video conference to do that. Um, and then, uh, we will, once that is complete, we will bring this back to city council, um, at the May fourth meeting for final approval. And after that, staff can work on, um, getting, uh, checks ready for distribution. Um, what else do we got here? I covered all of that. Um, the final thing that I wanted to bring up on this was a discussion we had about the Chamber of Commerce. One of the exclusions for this program is to exclude nonprofit businesses because this is a business, um, assistance program. However, the chamber is in kind of the unique position because, um, they are, part of their mission is to help local businesses. And I know Chris has been doing a ton of work helping our local businesses, um, try to, um, apply for federal funding and for some of the other funding programs out there, and has been a great resource to that. We also didn't, uh, the, the work group also didn't want to have the chamber compete, uh, with other businesses for this. They, they felt strongly, um, that the chamber should get funding regardless. And so, um, the recommendation from the group and, and the group members can speak more to this, um, is to try and find an additional three thousand dollars in funding for the chamber. Uh, a minimum of that. Um, I would recommend if it's possible to give them more than that based on our budget, I would, I would strongly recommend doing that.
I can speak to, uh, that point. Um, the, the members of that group, uh, Chris was not part of that. And that was another thing. We wanted her to be part of the evaluation of the program and be part of the group and wanted to take all conflict of interest out. So.
Correct.
We did that. It was, uh, uh, Counselor Lee, uh, Counselor Exner, myself, as well as David, David, on that, uh, initial two or three meetings that we had in forming, uh, this draft on that. And so we were, uh, proposing that, um, additional thing there as helping our businesses by helping the chamber as well, who's doing a lot of that work outside of the context of this grant.
Outstanding. Um, well, uh, a process question. I see Counselor Exner has a, uh, his finger up as well. Uh, you mentioned that it would come in front of council, uh, at our next meeting, but this is an urban renewal meeting. So we would need to have another urban renewal board meeting for approval. Is that correct?
I was, uh, when we talked about this before, David, it was that we were going to go through this approval process, but then we weren't needing to wait for a whole nether council meeting after that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, because these were the awardees that we, um, had chosen, um, in the speed of that, um, instead of having then the council then reevaluate, all the valuations we had just done would be, uh, seeing a little bit, um, time consuming as well as that was the purpose of the, the group. So.
I agree with that. Uh, Counselor Exner?
Yeah. One of the things that we tried to do when we put this thing together was, uh, we recognized that all these businesses are hurting. And it might be a bit before the federal government gets their act together. So a lot of the, you'll notice the criteria that we put together are pretty minimal, pretty simple, easy to get through, shouldn't be very difficult to, uh, respond to. Didn't really want to ask a whole lot of questions afterwards. Didn't want people to think, well, we're going to be micromanaging them. So if you'll notice, we're trying to get this out fast, quickly, and then doing it in this process that will help people to, you know, push through the interim until the federal government, if they ever get their act together, comes up with their monies as well. And I, I think that, I don't even, I personally don't have any problem with the urban renewal board being able to meet again and make decisions. But again, to wait for our next council meeting two weeks out, uh, that's going to even put more delay on it. So I'd recommend that if, uh, we do have to want to discuss it some is that we let the committee, the five members, uh, push through on that. Once we said yes, the, the way we've displayed it.
And then there, I don't know if you can see, but, uh, Chief Schneider has hit the raise hand button.
Oh, I, I did not see. Um, yeah, go ahead, Chief.
Just question on the general liability requirements, exclusions on number four, where it says chain restaurants. Does that mean like, I'm looking like, yeah, the single owner, like a Baskin Robbins, there's a lot of them out there. But from Sandy's single owner, does that, that doesn't exclude her, correct? Just because that chain, because.
Actually, it would exclude them. Yeah. Any, 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 uh, business that has more than twelve locations.
But David, was, was there a conversation to this? Because not to interrupt, we had this exact same conversation leading into the committee meeting, which is as to your point, franchise owners a lot of times are members of your community that own that location. Was there a discussion and, and where did you guys end up and why?
Um, well, yeah, we did have a discussion, uh, about it and, uh, the part of the, really, I think one of the things we were looking at is like, for instance, uh, McDonald's is locally owned. I think the, the owners of that, uh, particular store, uh, live here. I don't know if they live in the city or not, but they live close. Um, there was some discussion about how that would look, um, to give McDonald's one of these, even though it is a locally owned franchise. Um, the other part of that is a lot of these chain restaurants have a lot of employees. Um, so they would probably, uh, and, and we'd be looking to give preference to those with, uh, uh, smaller numbers of employees anyway. Um, Jeremy Carl or Jan, you're more than welcome to jump in on this as well.
Yeah, that's, you know, we, we looked at that. That was, um, um, exactly what David said. You know, a smaller number of employees, but also the, some of the, um, the optics of the program and that there was only so much out there to be able to do that, right? And, um, we've heard and read and most of you might have read in the articles in the papers, which we were reading at the time of going through this, that there were a lot of chain, uh, restaurants getting, um, I don't want to say, taken advantage of the system of being able to get in there. And when you have to look at one over another, very hard to determine, you know, one restaurant, whether it's, you know, you know, McDonald's over Burger King or Taco Time over, you know, that type of thing. So, which would then, uh, eat up a lot of that. So anyways, that was part of our discussion.
And Dan? Remember you gotta unmute yourself, Jan.
No, okay. Um, I wanted to say that I agreed with that because some of the franchise distributors also help those franchise owners. So they get a little extra boost from some of our local restaurants by comparison. Maybe not all of them, but my other concern is that we go ahead and approve this so that we don't have to meet again as a council to distribute the awards, given the timeframe.
Yeah, I would also mention real quickly, I don't know if you guys all saw the story about Shake Shack, uh, in the news, getting ten million dollars from, uh, from one of the federal programs and the public outcry that followed that, um, made them basically return that money. Um, there, Ruth's Chris ended up getting twenty million dollars and they're getting torn apart in media right now for that as well. Um, so that kind of factored into the decision a little bit as well.
Sure. Uh, the only thing I would say to that is, you know, I don't, I don't, whatever with the optics. I mean, the right thing to do is the right thing to do. The wrong thing to do is the wrong thing to do. And, um, you know, it's the pay, you know, it's the payroll protection act. Some of these businesses we listed, well, they got a lot of payroll. They employ a lot of people. And so we've got to protect these businesses and thus their employees who are our neighbors that are making their payment. So, uh, I'm good with it. Let's move forward with the program. But I do, just I guess maybe it's a little bit of a pet peeve, but I do get a little defensive of some of these locally owned businesses that are franchise owners of a larger company, kind of getting called out as if, you know, they're not hurting right now because they are and their employees are hurting. Uh, Bethany, go ahead.
Um, I was curious, I, you said, um, I know nonprofits are not allowed. Is, is Ant Farm in that?
Yes.
Group? Okay.
Yeah.
Ant Farm's doing okay right now, though.
Are they? Okay.
I'm a board member over there and, uh, I talk with Numpa at least three or four times a week. And, um, yeah, he, uh, filed for paycheck protection. He just brought back all his staff today.
Oh, good.
Yeah. So there, there, I mean, there, everybody's hurting right now, but, um, on a, on a grand scale, they're hurting a lot less. Numpa's actually in a pretty good frame of mind right now. So.
You know, the thing I would add to that is, is that we've got people who have absolutely no resources behind them at all. And a lot of these franchise folks possibly could have some help from behind the scenes from some other, other companies. And so we're talking about some people that are just the one and only, and they've got five or six employees, have no way to get anything in terms of support, uh, except maybe of a short term, except for something through this. And I, I guess where we want to emphasize our time and, and our monies.
So on the nonprofits, I know, I, I think the three thousand, uh, the chambers coming from our nonprofit fund that we had the committee meet on, that we had access money for. And the Kiwanis aren't going to have some of their events that drive money. I'm thinking like the pancake breakfast. I mean, a lot of events are getting canceled right now. A lot of these nonprofits are very, very heavy on events. For example, the three thousand is not even going to touch what the chamber is going to lose i- i- if the music fair and feast, you know, doesn't take place this year, like the mountain festival's not. So are we able to, where are we? I guess the question is more aimed towards Jordan is, is how does that nonprofit fund look right now? And are we using a lot of that for this? Is the three thousand to the chamber coming from that? And is there more capacity in that fund to help out some of these local nonprofits that might be hurting as a result of some of their events getting taken away?
Well, I think, uh, the general fund portion, a large, large percentage of, of that came from the economic development budget. Uh, the leftover funds from the special service support, you have to remind me of that.
Special service contract program.
Contract program. Um, David, is there anything left in that, uh, program or did this, was it essentially seventeen thousand pulled from the remainder of that grant program?
Yeah, yeah, that was, uh, the rest, there is money left in that program, but it's all earmarked for, uh, for that, those grants. Um, the leftover money that we had in there in the SSCP was, uh, economic development's contribution to this program.
Okay. I mean, if the council or the board wanted to move in the direction of providing, you know, more funding for nonprofits, including the chamber, I mean, um, we can, we could take a look at what some of the sources might be for that, um, including, you know, if we need to move ten, twenty grand from contingency, you know, recognizing that this is, uh, extraordinary circumstance and, um, you know, unforeseen, but, uh, the benefit of supporting, you know, these local nonprofits, um, outweigh the, you know, the, the risk of, um, you know, taking, uh, money out of our, you know, reserve funds, uh, which are there for, in times of emergency and unforeseen circumstances. So, and we can also look around too, to see if there's any other sources, but, you know, we've been kind of doing that, um, through this process and, um, you know, like we did with, uh, the contract program. So, um, I, I, I would like to say if it's, you know, close to three, you know, somewhere between three and ten thousand dollars, we should be able to find that somewhere, you know, if, if it comes from, you know, several departments or something like that. Um, you know, even, even that is, is, you know, something is basically searching all the couch cushions and pulling together as much funding as we can, um, to come up with, you know, ten thousand dollars.
Well, before we make that decision, obviously, like I want to get, for one, want to get a lot more comfortable with what our house looks like. You know, and what the fiscal impact of all of this is going to be on our, our city government budget and our contingencies. And that said though, just like I kind of originally brought up, this is, is I want this to be in the back of our mind as we start looking at what our budget looks like. We haven't really made it through event season yet. You know, that's really the summer months. So I don't know if we really need to make a heavy decision until we get towards the middle, the end of summer, beginning of fall at looking at some of that. But I do want it on our radar screen as I think it's important. And of course I'm going to be eagerly awaiting any reforecasts of our budget here coming up. So. David?
Uh, just, uh, another, uh, just another, uh, data point for you guys too. Um, there's, we're probably not, we get a lot of, uh, uh, grant money through Clockmouth County Tourism, uh, that comes in here to do, um, we've done a lot of work on Middick Park, but there's, uh, I know the chamber has gotten some help from Clockmouth County Tourism in the past for events. I know some of the other nonprofits too. Um, I don't know if you guys are aware, but on Friday, um, the Clockmouth County Tourism Cultural Affairs, uh, Department laid off eleven of its thirteen employees, uh, permanently. Um, so the only people left over there are Samara and Lizzy Keenan. Um, so I, and, and they canceled the CPP program for this year. I have, I suspect the CPP program probably isn't coming back. So just so you know.
Okay. Uh, so urban renewal board, are we good with moving ahead with this program, letting the committee implement it without us, uh, reconvening for any votes? I'm seeing nods.
Yes.
Chris, you're doing really good with your head. You haven't nodded yet. Okay. Dan, we're good. You're smiling. Okay. All right. Uh, I'm seeing a strong consensus to move ahead, uh, with this program. Uh, except for Carl, he says it.
No, I'm not hesitant at all. I'm all in favor of this. I just, I, I didn't know that we had a complete conclusion about the chamber and that they were looking for a way to grab some money out of, maybe some more general fund and throwing them into the, uh, the, the selected category so that they can have money separate from the other process. And I think that's, well, I want to make sure that that's everybody's nodding head on that one too.
Yeah, that was mine. Everybody?
Yes.
Right.
Lobby Chris.
Yeah.
Mayor, we do have a hand up. Uh, I think Kelly has his hand up.
Kelly, go ahead.
Yeah. So since I helped, since I helped put together the budget for economic development, that's one of the four budgets I helped put together. I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's eight thousand dollars coming out of, oh, three economic development and seventeen thousand dollars coming out of contingency.
That's correct. Yes. I had it backwards.
Okay. I just want to make sure that was the case because I was going to say, I don't think we have seventeen thousand extra economic development for this. Okay. So, okay. I just want to make that clarification. Thank you.
Twenty thousand out of contingency is around number, if we add three thousand for the chamber.
Great. Let's do that.
I went back to more than the three grand, I thought. So.
Um, so with that, just want to say thank you to staff for moving quickly on this program. Obviously these are trying times, a lot of moving parts. Everything's changing daily, if not hourly. So thank you for all the work towards this, as well as the committee members. Uh, Carl, Jeremy, Jan, uh, Chris, and then I know Kurt McKnight, who's not in this meeting, also participated. So thank you, everybody. I think this is a really good program for our community. And, and as I mentioned, I do want to kind of keep our eyes open for, uh, some of these other nonprofits, um, as we move along as well, because I think their budgets are going to hurt. And let's not forget, we don't really have a human services department at the city of Sandy. So we depend heavily on these nonprofits to kind of work as that function for us. Uh, so let's, uh, let's be careful to keep them in mind as we move ahead, looking at our budget. So. Thank you on that. And with that, I will, uh, close the Sandy Urban Renewal Board, uh, Agency Meeting. And I will convene our city council, uh, work session. All right. Uh, so with that, I'll start our meeting with a quick review of tonight's, uh, agenda. Uh, we have two items on the consent agenda. Uh, one is our minutes from our April sixth meeting, as well as a drug and alcohol policy update from our, uh, for transit. Uh, I look at those policy updates all the time for what I do for work. So that was fun. Uh, anybody have questions on our, uh, consent agenda? All right. Great. Um, under, uh, ordinances, uh, we have a quasi judicial hearing for McCormick Drive Zone change. Any questions before we go into that?
Yeah, I had some questions. I don't know, bring them up there was, um, questioning why R two versus R three and some of those things. I don't know, bring them up there was, um, questioning why R2 versus R3 and some of those things, but I mean.
Well, yeah, I, yeah, I think this is more process, I think. Do you have any questions on pro, or, or is there anything you think that, Jeremy, that you think you want staff to start researching now that they, you worry they may not be prepared for with an odd, you know, kind of question when the time comes?
I asked Jordan that on, uh, Friday, uh, those questions, so.
Okay.
He could prepare with Kelly or whomever.
Yeah, thank, thanks, counselor.
Yeah, so, so Jeremy's ready to hold you accountable for those. So as we go forward, uh, uh, in our old business, we'll be, uh, having our council discussion and vote on the Bailey Meadows subdivision appeal. Uh, one thing, uh, that reminds me going into our meeting tonight is, um, I had a little bit of concerns, uh, that individuals from the community would want to speak during our public comment portion of the meeting, uh, addressing Bailey Meadows. Uh, so when I go into my, kind of my meeting explanatory statement at the beginning, I'll be explaining that public comment for that particular issue has come to an end. And that as, uh, council, uh, we're, we're just, it'd be breaking our quasi judicial public hearing rules to hear it during the public, uh, testimony portion. And so we won't be able to take public testimony on that particular issue. Does any counselors have any questions for me on that? Carl?
Yes, uh, just generally, I'm getting some feedback that, uh, some of the citizens are feeling like there's, with this virtual process that we've got, that there is a, um, electronic barrier to get people to be able to do this comfortably or as comfortably as it might be had we been in the open session kind of regime. And I'm just, just thinking to myself, there is some concern about being able to get past this. And I know some people are just not computer literate. And I know we've provided a comment or two in our introductions to these meetings about how you can get to the process through another, uh, more low tech, I guess you call it, uh, way. But, um, I am getting some feedback that this is a little more difficult to get in, to, uh, make comment, be part of. And I know at this point, we're at that point, but I'm not sure that I'm at this point thinking about doing anything different. But just be aware that I'm getting some feedback for that. And I, I can feel that energy about how people are thinking this is a little tougher to get to the point where they can make a comment.
Well, I, I hear you. I think we all do on that. Uh, but, you know, the governor, even her public meeting executive order that came down, she didn't do anything about the clock. Um, so we, we're still under state mandates on a lot of these public, um, land use meetings that we have to do. Um, and, you know, it's really the only mode of communication that we have available to us to, um, you know, to conduct these meetings. So obviously, we'd want to do it in person. Um, and I hear you too, counselor. I, I certainly hear those things and I'd love to be there for this meeting. But, you know, it's kind of, we're doing the best we can in this situation.
Or, yeah, I have no, I have no alternative or no proposal at this point. I just want to make it as a recognition that we have certainly some concerns in the community. Jordan?
Uh, why, you know, I just want to, um, argue for just one second on the other side of the coin on this is that in, in one way, it actually opens up, uh, participation, the fact that people don't actually have to travel in person to come to a council chambers and testify, you know, in front of a dais, in front of a city council. Um, you know, where, when else can you actually just call on your phone and testify? Um, and the council, you know, did, uh, keep the record open for seven days for more written comments and, and, you know, for people to be able to just email or write their comments. Um, and I think for people that have young kids at home or maybe are in firm or something, um, the fact that you don't have to get in your vehicle and drive and actually make comments in person, uh, makes this even more accessible. And I understand the techno, you know, the technical divide, technology divide there, um, where some people, you know, obviously this would be a little bit harder. But, um, even having the option of just dialing a phone number to be able to provide comment, I think is actually, um, a little forward thinking. And, uh, maybe through the, through this process, uh, that we're going through now, we can look at ways to expanding, um, by using platforms such as this in tandem with in-person testimony. So, um, I, I agree, I hear you too, but I also, I think there is some benefits that we're seeing in, um, providing more accessibility for people to, to participate in these, uh, public hearings.
Well, to, to that point, three of us just referenced the Clockmouth County Commission debate, that I don't know if any three, one of the three of us would have been at if it wasn't on Zoom today, you know? Uh, I've been, uh, I've actually attended a Clockmouth County Commission meeting via Zoom. Uh, so, I mean, it is, it's a lot easier, right? And I, I don't have to leave my house and I can watch it participate. So, uh, yeah, pluses and minuses.
Culture is changing, whether we like it or not, and it is changing.
So that's Bailey Meadows. Um, with that, under new business, adoption of our Transit Master Plan, uh, Transit Operations Intent to Award, and our Parks and Trails Advisory Board Member Term Updates. But that will gain our city manager and our committee and council reports. Uh, with that, we'll go ahead and get into our, what I thought we were starting with, our, uh, Special District Formation Voter Survey. I see John Campbell and Martha, uh, DeYoung. There, you might want to start to unmute. And Jordan, do you want to just kind of provide us with a, uh, an introduction to, uh, what will be some outstanding results, especially in the middle of the COVID-19?
Oh, you just spoiled it. Um, well, I'm pleased to introduce John and Martha again. Um, and they'll be presenting, uh, the findings from, uh, the latest survey that was done. Um, and they'll go through the demographics and the timing, but it was, um, early to, early March through mid-March. So, uh, as the mayor hinted at, uh, interesting time to be doing a poll. Um, but the, this, uh, this questionnaire was, um, uh, conducted and, and completed with, uh, the assistance of the, the survey work group that included Counselor Schultz and Counselor Smallwood and the mayor, um, and then also with some staff input. Um, but this was, uh, the next step after going through, uh, that special district formation process and studying the different options and, uh, what this district would look like and where the boundaries were and the costs. Um, this was the big ask of would voters, uh, want to vote, um, yes, to pay for this and increase their taxes? So again, an interesting time to be doing a poll, but I think there's some still, uh, some data that we can glean from this. And also, um, I know John and Martha have some recommendations for the next steps. Um, and then if there is time, uh, tonight or in a future, uh, meeting, I think, uh, we need to have a little bit of a conversation about what are the next steps for the city and for the campus, um, and, and the pool, especially, um, in the interim. So, uh, with that, uh, I know we're, um, running out of time here, but I'll hand it off to John and Martha to, uh, deliver the news.
Okay. Uh, first, can you all hear us?
Yes.
Okay.
And do we need to be done by seven o'clock? Is that our understanding?
Uh, no, I mean, yes and no. I mean, try to hover around seven. Uh, we're not super strict on that. Um, you know, but yeah.
Okay, okay, yeah.
You go along though. All right, uh, so we, uh, I, I trust you can see the screen that we just shared?
Yes, we can.
Okay, okay. Um, and Jeff, I'll say interrupt, uh, we, we certainly, if you have questions as we go through this, we are happy to hear them. Jeff, we may not notice hands raised because we're not ready to that, uh, that, those screens, I think, right here. Uh, but so feel free to let us know. Um, our thought was, uh, in the interest of time, we've shortened this a bit from the PDF that, um, that I think, believe you all received or that, uh, Jordan will be sending out. And, um, I'm going to do play-by-play, Martha's going to do color commentary, and we're going to see if we can move through it, uh, at a fairly good pace, but please stop us and ask questions as, as we go through. So obviously, we're going to talk about the Aquatics and Recreation District Formation Survey. Let's see if I can get this to go. Uh, briefly, we'll talk about the message and the, the methods and the research results, and then tell you about, uh, the, um, do that in some depth with the results, and then talk about conclusions and recommendations. Uh, with the objectives, uh, it was to, um, assess the level of support for the potential districts formation and identify how to communicate it. We did a telephone interview, you probably did the mail out of a telephone survey structured this way gives us a, a, uh, a better scientific read of what voters actually think. Forty-one percent of them were conducted on cell phones. And the choice was to work with essentially the boundaries of the library district. Um, and so we worked with those boundaries. Um, and it is highly significant that the interviews were conducted from the 6th of March to the 21st of March. Um, and it was really during a period when the, uh, coronavirus pandemic concerns were starting to really, uh, really ramp up. So we saw even a difference in the first and second weeks with, uh, some of those, uh, those elements. And we'll comment on some of that as we go through. Uh, overall, a sample of 300, which is a good sample size, worst case reliability, you see listed there. We can explain more detail about what that means if those are, if you'd like more information on that. Our criteria, they need to live in the district, um, be a, we got them off of voter registration rolls, also need to describe themselves as a voter and have sufficient, uh, frequency. If they say they never vote, we wouldn't include them. Uh, the great majority vote in every election, uh, just 5% say they vote only in presidential elections. And our target was a 50-50 male female split. We ended up in the raw data with 54-45. We said, that's just enough of a difference, so we'll wait it. So while we have a raw data sample of 300, you'll see ends of 303 because that's a weighted sample that makes it, uh, that weight, uh, women and men 50-50 in the sample. And that's a short version on the methods, so. And happy to slow down if there is desire, otherwise we'll keep the, keep the pace. Uh, looking at the demographics, um, generally, they, uh, the length of residency is pretty similar to what we saw in the mail out, which is 25 years. This, the, this, the average is 27 years, but, uh, fair, uh, uh, which is not surprising that when we go to a pure voter survey, that it is going to skew older. Uh, the average age is 60, which is very typical for voter surveys. Um, our mail out, the average age is 57, um, and a wide range of ages, of course, but we're just giving the averages here. College education, uh, four and 10, or education four and 10 have a college degree, eight and 10, at least some post-secondary. So similar to the mail out, but a little bit lower overall average education, uh, attainment. And homeownership, not surprisingly, nine out of 10 own their home, 25% have children in the home. That children in the home is, is a key one that we will watch, particularly in something like a, a, uh, Aquatics Recreation District, because obviously if you have children at home, you may be more interested to support it. And we then asked, and I'll read this very quickly so that you have a sense of it, but we, uh, read, we read over the phone. We said, "The City of Sandy and surrounding communities are organizing an effort to form an aquatics and recreation district to serve the residents of these communities. As envisioned, the district would renovate and operate the currently closed aquatic center at the 40-acre community campus in Sandy. The approved, improved aquatic center would include a renovated indoor pool for year-round use. The district would also offer a range of recreational programs, for example, soccer, dance, and music, that are designed to serve all ages throughout the district. Yes, vote would result in the creation of the district, along with the establishment of a permanent property tax rate, the dollar 11 per thousand assessed value, not market value, for property assessed at $200,000 about average for residential property in the proposed district. The cost would be $222 a year if the district has created a five-member board of directors with, uh, private management oversee future direction of the district." But that description was read to them. And then we essentially asked them three sets of questions. Well, the first was, if the election were held today, would you vote yes or no, uh, in favor of the formation of the district? And then if they said they weren't, uh, sure, uh, we'd say, which way do you think you're leaning? And if they said that they would vote yes for the district, we said, the formation won't be on the ballot, um, till as early as, uh, could be on the ballot as early as November 2020. Other measures may be on the ballot at that time. How strong is your support? Are you very somewhat or not confident that you would support it? We ask these questions because we're always doing these surveys some months away from a potential vote. And so we need to look at it and sort of project what's going to happen out in the future. The first thing we're going to show you is the result of that initial ask, just would you vote yes, no, or don't know? Um, and then we'll put all of the questions together and show you what we think it actually means from that.
So what you're seeing here is that initial yes, no. Um, so we have 43% yes, 46% no, and 11% don't know. Um, this is not real positive news. Uh, we always, there are always no voters, but for things that we see go ahead and pass, that initial no is usually somewhere around the 25%, maybe 20% range. So a 46% initial, their, their initial reaction is no, is, is, it's not a positive result.
We're used to showing the initial ask and saying, don't get too excited about this because there's more information, but this is not something to be excited about because a yes is so small as well. But we'll, we'll break that down for you, but it, this, it does not look positive for us. And that should obviously is not, not too surprising, given the, the, uh, uh, economic situation, but we'll look at that. A few things, uh, stood out for us on this, and one that really stood out that we thought may be reflective of the current, uh, you know, concerns about pandemic, et cetera, is that while we typically see women more likely to, to support the money measure than men, that difference is usually about 10 percentage points. And in this survey, it was more than 20% difference. It had 54% of women initially saying yes, they would vote for this, and 32% of men, um, suggesting that, um, doesn't necessarily mean that men in Sandy are way more grumpy than, than women, but I think it, well, our speculation is, is that this extreme difference to us is a very large difference. We think it may be sort of a, a little bit more reaction of, uh, more nervousness about the future or hold on, I don't want to talk about anything until we get through this, sort of coming from men, but maybe some differences there. But we thought that was, uh, that, that really stood out as quite a difference. The other differences were a little bit more expected. Voters under 65, a little more likely to support, particularly those with children in the household. Uh, 66% saying yes, um, so very strong support there. And Sandy's zip codes, we didn't break out City of Sandy specifically, but Sandy's zip code of 97055, um, showed more support than the other zip codes in the, uh, in the district. And that is suggestive of the same thing we saw in the mail out, which is within the City of Sandy itself, more support than outside of it.
Okay, so what we see here is a breakdown of all those three, three questions that, that John was talking about. So for the, uh, yes voters, we asked them how confident they were, and we ended up with 27% saying they're very confident that they would stick with their vote, and that's how they would vote when, when it actually was on the ballot. Got 15% somewhat confident, 6% leaning yes, 2% don't know. No or leaning no goes up to 50%. Um, again, not what you would want to see. Uh, your fence sitters are 23% of the total, and those are the somewhat confident, uh, the leaning and the don't know. And those are really important people because those are the people that, uh, could change their mind. Uh, be, when, when they actually go to vote, they, they could vote yes, they could also vote no. And typically, what we see going forward is that a lot of those fence sitters, as it gets closer, will vote no.
So we think that, and because again, we're always doing this many months from the actual election. If you want perfect projection, let's poll the day before. Uh, but we take that and we make a projection. Martha's formula, she's built and sort of tested over time, or has tested over time, um, is we take all of the very confident yes voters and one-third of the fence, so, fence sitters, um, add those together and call that a projection. Um, over the years, uh, as we've tested this, we would call it a conservative projection. However, um, at a 35% projected yes, we have never seen a district, a, uh, an area of this size or larger get that kind of projection and come. And when they have decided to put it on the ballot anyway, they have always lost.
And usually by about this much.
Usually, yeah, by about this much, and, you know, uh, so it's, it's, uh, but we look at that and say, no, the answer to this is it's not the time to go. Doesn't necessarily mean that there won't be a time, but right now with this question, um, it is, uh, it's not the time to go. We've got the, uh, the Aquatics District has a little bit, uh, only district has a little bit more support. But when we look at this projection, it doesn't look, uh, doesn't look positive for that. And looking at that, um, our projections assume that this minimal change in relevant factors, including economic confidence and what people think of local government. Well, what's unique about this is we don't usually poll during, uh, I mean, polling during, it's such a high economic concern time is unusual for us, so that had already been factored in. And, but even over the two-week period of the survey, we saw that initial yes decline by almost two or three percentage points. Uh, and, uh, so we saw that get a, a little shakier over time. Um, and, uh, so we've said our trends show really no chance of passage in the near future. Uh, the aquatics only district, which is a question we asked after we talked about the, uh, Aquatics and Recreation District, um, has a bit more potential. And so we'll talk about that when we get to, uh, some of the, uh, recommendations and those elements, so. Uh, but again, the, there's an economic shock that we think you're, you're very familiar with, that is holding back, uh, going right away. And we then read them a series of facts, and this goes to how to communicate about that. And we'll summarize this as efficiently as possible, but we said, now I'm going to redo a series of factual statements regarding the proposed aquatics and. And we'll summarize this as efficiently as possible, but we said, now I'm going to redo a series of factual statements regarding the proposed aquatics and recreation district. Regardless of how you currently believe you will vote, please rate how useful the information seems to you. In clarifying whether or not you will vote for the in, uh, formation of the district. For each statement, please tell me whether it is very somewhat or not especially useful information regarding formation of the district. Kind of questions that you would ask, because you're simply looking at what is the useful information so that you can make your decisions. And then we can break that down by the no voters, the fence sitters, and the very confident yes voters and look at their opinion. We're going to show you what the information statements, how they rank, but I will, we're not expecting you to read all of this here. But mainly make the point that if you're looking at this data later and want to understand. Meaning about the information statements, understand that the short statements on the charts we're about to show you are abbreviations of the full statement. And the full statements are included in the report in the slide that looks like that, that tells you the full text. So if you're looking at something and starting to make a strategy about how you want to talk about things, certainly, you want to look at the full statement and not the abbreviation. Which is trying to capture a few of the highlights of that. But we asked every one of these statements from the tax rate down through others that we'll summarize a little bit. And very somewhat are not useful, and when we did that, this chart shows again those abbreviated statements on the left hand side. And shows you the percent who said that those are very useful statements. Looking at the chart, this has some utility, we'll break it down a little bit more in a next chart. But in this chart, you can see right away, it's interesting to us that the top three all relate to money. The tax rate, of course, dollar eleven and two hundred and twenty two dollars per year. Then the district residents would pay lower fees to use the facility, and then that Sandy can't fund the pool without it, and it would have to stay closed. So Martha, anything you wanted to say?
No, I think, I think you can, looking at the things that are at the bottom. The fact that city of Sandy would use urban renewal space. To, to build, urban renewal funds to build additional space that the district could lease. And the fact that third from the bottom is that the city is going to add playgrounds and, and trails to, to the river. Are, are at the bottom, and we think that that's because it doesn't relate to what the district is going to do. If people are going to vote for this district, they want to know what is this district going to do? And we always see community, meeting spaces down.
Frankly, we weren't surprised that the urban renewal fund statement was at the bottom, because we generally see voters get a little bit. As soon as you start talking about, we're going to use these different funding mechanisms. They're thinking, wait, what does that have to do with the direct benefit to the community? That's how we get there, but it isn't what there looks like. And so we, we do often see that type of placement. But you can look at this chart and that red line that we call the grand mean, which is an average of averages. That shows the average very useful rating, you can imagine a chart where that red line is zero. And that the bars go either to the left or to the right, depending on whether people generally rated a little higher or a little lower compared to what their inclination was. So we take that concept and then we use the three voter segments. The very confident yes voters, the fence sitters and the no voters, and we take their individual grand means because they're quite different. I won't go into this in a lot of detail, but very confident yes voters. Their average is eighty one percent very useful for, for each of the statement, fence sitter sixty six and no voters thirty five. But we put all that together on a chart, which can look a little confusing, but it should make sense shortly. Which is the statements that you see listed here on the, on, next to the bars are the exact same statements we were looking at. And they, the zero point on the chart is the grand mean for each of the three segments. The green is the very confident yes voters, the blue is the fence sitters, and the gray is the, are the no voters. So generally, when you see a bar go to the right of the, of the center line, that tells you that is a more useful statement to that group. When it goes to the left, it's a less useful statement. The simplest way to look at this chart is simply say, where, where the blue bar is going to the right? Because that often tells us what are the most important things to talk about, because the fence sitters are the ones who can, who need more information to make decisions. And those involve the tax rate, that the district residents would pay lower fees. That it's the service area will be similar to the library service area. And interestingly, that the renovated pool would be designed to serve for the next thirty years.
We like to say something about the, the tax rate, that top statement. You'll notice that the no voters are very concerned about money. Which is what we would expect, given what was going on. Nationwide at the time that we were taking this poll. We always, almost always see no voters being very concerned about money. Part of your problem in this case is that you have so many no voters, it's really driving it. You can see that for the very confident yes voters, it really is just a tiny bit above their average. And it's really, even for the fence sitters, it's not that far above their average. In general, if money, yes, is, is important, in this case is very important. But passage of a measure isn't dependent just on money, although in this case, because of what was going on.
And frankly, for us as researchers, seeing that the no voter and the sample is a hundred and fifty compared to very confident yes voters is eighty three. Really, for us, almost tells us all we need to know. It's probably worth pointing out also, this blue bar, I think you can see my cursor here. For the district would operate Sandy Recreation Programs for all ages and expand them. The fact that your fence sitters see that as less useful. And that goes to the recreation aspect of the aquatics and recreation district. Is maybe a preview to the concept that an aquatics only district, when the economy improves, may be a better. Maybe a safer bet with the electorate. After we read them these statements, we then asked them, okay, how does this change your vote and some of that? But frankly, they, the statements don't improve the yes voter confidence that much. So those who initially said no or unsure changed to saying yes. By resulting in a theoretic five point swing towards yes overall, so from forty three percent to forty eight percent. Which is a fairly small swing, and that would depend on everybody hearing all of the statements, which is, which is unlikely. And the percentage of respondents who, who are very confident their yes vote, so we asked yes voters, now how confident are you now that we've read all this stuff? It rose by just two percentage points. And that surprises, we, I don't think we've seen one that has risen.
Usually, you get a lot of the somewhat confident after they hear the statements. You should see that very confident going up at least ten points is what we typically see.
Well, that isn't good news. The, when we asked the aquatics only follow up, and we're always leery of asking two different money options, because there's, there's. You know, game theory would tell you that that results in problems with a clean read. But after we read them the, the questions that essentially we've gone through already. We said a different approach under consideration is to form just an aquatics different district with the sole purpose of renovating and operating aquatic center. At the community campus, the current indoor pool would be renovated and staffed, but the district would offer no other recreational programs and amenities. The tax rates associated with this type of district would be sixty seven cents per thousand. The property value at a two hundred thousand, the cost would be a hundred and thirty dollars per year, rather than two hundred and twenty two per year for an aquatics and recreation district. If voters are asked to form an aquatics district, would you vote yes for the formation of aquatics district or no against it? So we asked them the sort of less expensive option, aquatics district only.
We do see a little increase in the yes. So that initial yes is forty six percent for the combined recreation aquatics. It's now forty nine percent for just the aquatics district.
Yeah, so I'm jumping from forty three to forty six. But, so it is more positive, and it's not great, but it is more positive. And when we look at that, there are elements that, you know, you sort of, the game theory part is how many people who were saying yes. On the more expensive districts switched to no, and a few did. You look at that and say, okay, they probably did that because they want to encourage the research to include to do the larger district. And then you have some people who said no on the first one and said yes on this. And, okay, is it because they would really vote for it, or they're trying to push the results to, to that? So there's a little bit of, it makes it, it, that's why we call these not as clean a read. But it does suggest that there is potentially more support, not enough right now, but more support for an aquatics only district.
Finally, we asked about information sources, just really quickly, how do they learn about local elections? And how important each of these sources are, we read them, this list. And, and this result is, is, is classic. Is exactly what we see in, in most situations at this point. With the voters pamphlet, seventy two percent saying that's very important. In Oregon, that is how people learn about local elections. The online or print articles in the Sandy Post does reasonably well for a local paper. We have seen local papers who are doing a little bit better in the last couple of years. Direct mail has also gotten a little bit better. Some people who say that television and radio is very important. City of Sandy webpages, and then at the bottom, where it typically is at this point, is social media, including Facebook or Twitter. With larger samples, we've been able to look at different age groups, even with the youngest age groups. When you compare the importance of the voters pamphlet and the importance of social media. The voters pamphlet is still three times more important than social media. So social media is a little more important to young people. But remember, we're talking about local elections, and I think that's an important distinction.
And we're also talking about voters who tend to skew older. But the major takeaway is, if you, the, the first place to spend resources is make sure the information in a voter's pamphlet is really, is. Detailed, appropriate, clear, and, and all of that, so that's where you, that's where you focus first. And certainly, social media, yes, has value, but don't ever sacrifice some of these others. To, to social media, you want to certainly track social media, but usually the people on social media looking at local elections are people who are. Pretty in the know and are going to be making their own decisions. Aren't going to be just sitting down and discovering that this is on the ballot at the moment they, they go to vote and looking at voters. And then to move through the conclusions and recommendations. Voters, I think, as we talked with you about, make decisions on, for money measures on three factors, perceive community benefit. Trust in the organization to use tax dollars wisely, and degree of personal economic competence. And the issue here that's hardest for, for you to control is economic competence. And it makes a voter approval unlikely in the near term. We wrestled with what kind of historic comparison we have for this, and obviously, we weren't polling back in nineteen eighteen when the. The so-called Spanish flu epidemic came, so we don't have that comparison. But in two thousand eight, there was a major downturn. And voting results typically meet or beat our projections. In two thousand eight, we polled in the spring. And when the, the economy looked healthy, and then before the November two thousand eight election, it absolutely tanked. And the voting results came in about ten percentage points below the projections. Fortunately, the projections were healthy enough so that everything passed, but they all, they sort of squeaked by rather than coming by, passing comfortably. So we don't see with this, although we've baked in some economic, economic anxiety already during the survey period. We think that without a return to reasonable economic confidence, we don't see a path for, for passage of either option at this point. And our general recommendation, delay the district vote until the pandemic disruption is passed. With an economic rebound, there's better support can be expected from all groups, though it's not assured. And based on our current data, we think an aquatics only district, while still a challenge as a basic, has a greater likelihood of passage. Fence sitters do consider the value of the benefit as opposed to just the cost. But the difference between a dollar eleven per thousand for the aquatics and rec district and sixty seven cents per thousand is substantial. We do think that, that, that matters there. So, and as a final slide, if you're wondering if we're there yet. The, are, we, we look at this and say, given the unlikely support in twenty twenty. We, we think you have questions like, can the city afford to maintain that a closed pool facility until a future when that economic confidence returns? In addition, we think the best chance would be waiting until twenty twenty two or later, because you are likely to get more support. In more populated elections where younger voters are more likely to turn out, because they're going to provide more support. So going in a very, an off, off year election would be, be harder to create passage. If you can afford to wait, lay the groundwork, and our final recommendation is one that we don't give very often, because it's obviously self-serving. But we really do think that with this one, considering additional research, when the economy improves, particularly if you're evaluating an aquatics only approach. Because the statements that we read presumed aquatics and recreation. And if you're looking at aquatics only approach, we think you can likely improve your information statements, looking at that. And then develop your descriptions, ballot explanations, your title, ballot title, and all of that, based on those materials. So that is a seven oh six, that wasn't too bad. So that, that concludes the, the presentation of the information. Any questions before I stop, at least stop sharing the, the screen?
And council, no question for me, but this is my second time through the presentation. I don't have the luxury of being able to see everybody as a result of how the screen ends up appearing, so I'm going to go ahead and ask for people to just. Pipe up with any questions.
Well, I will stop the share, so you will see.
Well, thank you. Any questions?
Not so much a question, but it seems like it's really a dollar amount that drives the decision between aquatic and recreation and aquatic. So maybe telling a better story would come out with a little different answer.
I think that's a, a fair statement, and most of the time Martha and I are in the position of telling, telling city councillors, wait a minute, it's not just about money. It's about benefits, and so certainly telling a better story is relevant. And with this, we do think there's a, there's a pretty large financial difference there, so we do think it does play, play some role. But I definitely echo what, what you just said, that people really do look at. Is it, is it valuable, is the benefit valuable enough, and do I believe you can deliver? And if so, then they'll pay, so they really don't just look at cost, but we know that hardcore no voters, basically, they just look at cost.
That's all, you had a question?
Yeah, just, I think I know what this answer would be, but if the economy were to rebound, let's say in. Everybody's saying it's going to come back slowly, but if it does come back, gangbusters. I suppose we're, there's no chance of it even come close to passing if we do get the rebound at all. I think, Jordan, don't we have to get it into the, by the May deadline anyway? So even if we get a rebound, it's certainly not going to happen before that May deadline, right?
Yeah, I mean, if anyone had a crystal ball, I would, I would pay a handsome coin for that. But that is, that is the problem here, is we can't, we don't have the, the option of waiting to see how it plays out this summer and put it on the ballot. Unlike, you know, if we were going out for a bond, there's a little more cushion there, waiting till August, and then do a go or no go at this point. Because we would rely upon the county, convincing the county board to put it, the measure on the ballot. That does put us on a much tighter timeline to do that. So you really are gambling and, and making the assumption that things are going to turn around, and we can put our full weight behind this and get it passed. Despite, you know, the current situation.
So considering our time tonight and the clear results of the survey. I would like to direct all further kind of back and forth between council and next steps in this process to a future work session for us. And guide our questions tonight towards the actual survey. And, and John and Martha, so that we can kind of get through those while we have the luxury of having them. Any questions for John and Martha? I know the, the few of us have already gone through that, through the presentation, and, and the results are pretty clear.
Let me just add that, I might say, we service what we sell. So if questions come up later and you'd like to, and if you're looking at the report and thinking, I, I think this means this, or I, I, I'm wondering about this conclusion. You are welcome to call us, we always say that, but we happen to be fairly available to take phone calls right now, so. So, but you know, you're welcome, you're welcome to call us. And if questions do happen to come up, and we'd be glad to talk about it in the future as well.
Well, thank you so much for the results and for, it's been great working with you. I've been on the committee, and I know that both Lori and Bethany and Jordan and Jeff and Tyler and Tanya, all of us have been on that committee, you know, kind of to test just like how great it's been working through our process, how incredibly patient the two of you are with us and all of our back and forth, then my melding and trying to move this along quickly. So thank you so much, really appreciate it. I just, I note to council, obviously, this is some disappointing results, but we still have some big decisions in front of us. But if anything, this gives us a little bit more time to breathe on this issue. And so that's why I want to move it to a future meeting where we can absorb these results a little bit and they come together and have just more of a holistic conversation about next steps. Any further conversation on this topic?
Well, thank you guys for your help.
Yeah, thanks, really appreciate it.
All right.
With that.
We enjoyed working with you, too. We really did.
Yeah, we know. And you put up with us, so that's part of it, too.
Well, I think actually you put up with us, so thank you very much.
Right. All right, well, thank you, everybody. I'm going to adjourn the work session for three minutes. I'm going to give everybody an opportunity to get some water, go to the restroom real quick. We have a real busy agenda in front of us. And then, but please hurry back so we can reconvene here in the next couple of minutes. Here, I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Please join me in standing for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, welcome, everybody. We have a jam-packed meeting this evening. Per tradition, I will start with just a review of what's on our agenda for this evening. We will begin with Jeff calling the roll call. We'll then go to changes to the agenda. And then we have public comment. For public comment this evening, if you are wanting to participate in our meeting for the McCormick Drive Zone change, please hold your public comment for that time during that hearing. Other than that, public, this public comment portion will be for everyone else. Please note, the hearing and official record for the Bailey Meadows subdivision appeal are now closed. The council's unable to take any further testimony on this matter at this time and must make its decision based on the evidence already in the record. If you would like to speak on any other matter, we welcome your comments. Please see the instructions below on the agenda. I'll read those now. If you're participating online, click the raise hand button at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. So I'll go through those instructions again during the public comment portion. We'll then have our consent agenda. The items on that agenda this evening is our city council meetings from April sixth, two thousand twenty, as well as our transit drug and alcohol policy update. We'll move on to ordinances. That will be the quasi judicial hearing on the McCormick Drive Zone change. Public comment for that will be heard during that hearing. We'll then move on to old business, the Bailey Meadows subdivision appeals. I mentioned, the public comment period for that is now over. And that will be for our council to have a council discussion and then a vote on the appeal. We'll then move on to new business and the adoption of our transit master plan, as well as going through the Sandy area metro operations request for proposals. And then we'll be reviewing Parks and Trolls Advisory Board Member Term Update Proposal. From there, we'll have a report from the city manager and then move on to committee and counselor reports. With that, Jeff, will you please call the roll?
Counsel Pete Sold.
Here.
Counselor Smallwood. Counselor Hamblin.
Present.
Counselor Lee.
Here.
Counselor Exner.
Here.
Counselor Schultz.
Here.
Mayor Pulliam.
Here. So with that, is there any changes to our agenda this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to public comment. Please refer to my earlier comments about the public comment portion for Bailey Meadows subdivision appeal now being closed. If you would like to make a public comment and speak on any other matter, please, you can participate online by clicking the raise hand button at the appropriate time. That'd be now and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. That would be now, Jeff, will you let us know if you have any public comment?
Okay, we'll just give it one moment, Mayor.
Great.
Just waiting for any hands to be raised. Mayor, I do not see any raised hands.
All right, with that, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt our consent agenda this evening?
I would move.
I'll second that.
A motion by Counselor Lee and a second by Counselor Pete Sold to adopt our consent agenda. Jeff, will you please roll call vote?
Counselor Pete Sold.
Yes.
Counselor Smallwood.
Yes.
Counselor Hamblin.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Exner.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Mayor Pulliam.
Yes. From there, we will be moving on to our McCormick Zone Change Request. So with that. So instructions for our virtual public hearing this evening. Public testimony for this hearing will be called for in three groups. Testimony in favor of the proposal, testimony opposed to the proposal, and then neutral testimony. If you're participating online, click the raise hand button at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand at the appropriate time and then wait to be recognized. The speaker time limits will be fifteen minutes for the applicant's presentation, five minutes for each audience member testifying in favor, against, or neutral, and then five minutes for the applicant's rebuttal. And I will now open the hearing for ordinance twenty twenty dash oh four nineteen dash oh three seven CPA ZC McCormick Drive Zone Change. The time is seven twenty-three on April twentieth. Any extensions from the hearing body? Any conflicts of interest from the hearing body?
Just so you know that I am within the three hundred feet of the notice for this particular project.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Exner. Is there, I'm going to now pull our hearing body for any ex parte contact. Please remember that includes any site visits. Counselor Exner, I think you live at a site visit, do you not?
Well, not quite, but I'm about two hundred feet from the site, so pretty close to me. I walk by it all the time to see the post office. So.
Sure. To bring a challenge, if you're participating online, please click the raise the hand button at the appropriate time. That would be now and wait to be recognized. And if you're participating via telephone, dial star nine to raise your hand at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. That would be right now.
Not seeing any challenges, Mayor.
Okay, I'm now calling for any other challenges to any individual hearing body members. Same instructions.
Not seeing any challenges, Mayor.
Thank you, Jeff. If you testify, you must raise all issues you wish to address at this hearing. If your issue is not raised at this hearing, it cannot be raised later in any appeal. Your comments should state why the application should or should not be approved or include your proposed modifications you believe are necessary for approval according to the standards. If you do not raise specific issues at the final evidentiary hearing or by the close of the record, or fail to provide statements or evidence to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue, you will not be able to appeal the decision to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that particular issue. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of the approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. I'm looking for a staff report, would that be you, Kelly?
It's me, Emily, and I'm going to share my screen and pull it up.
Thank you.
Let me know if you have any issues with that. Looks like it's working.
All right, if you can, if you can see the PowerPoint, then we're good to go, I guess. So we're looking at McCormick Drive Zone Change. Just a little context, you can probably find Carl's house on here, but it's the area in red. It's right where Van Fleet tees into McCormick. And then, you know, it's between McCormick and Highway twenty-six. And the request is to, it's both a comprehensive plan designation change and a zone change. And so the request is to go from commercial to medium density residential. So that zone change would be C two general commercial to R two medium density residential. And the property is approximately two and a half acres. So this is the current comprehensive plan map. The red is commercial, the orange across the highway is medium density residential, and the yellow south of the site is lotus density residential. This is the current zoning map. So again, the property is circled in black there. And it's in the C two general commercial zone, south of it is single family residential. And then the orange across the highway to the north is the R two medium density residential. So just a couple of things to keep in mind as you review it. So back in February two thousand seventeen, when we did the urban growth boundary expansion analysis, there was a three point six acre surplus of commercial land and a seventeen point one acre surplus of medium density residential land for the twenty-year planning horizon of that study. So rezoning this two and a half acre property from commercial to medium density residential would reduce that commercial surplus to one point one acres and increase the medium density residential surplus to nineteen point six acres. And then a couple of things just about the zones. So C two recently was modified to allow housing above ground floor commercial as an outright permitted use. Whereas in R two, R two would allow commercial uses, but only through a conditional use permit. So they're not allowed outright. Those are just some distinctions between the two zones. Currently, as it's zoned general commercial, the general commercial design standards would apply to this site. And that includes a required landscape buffer along Highway twenty-six. That's a twenty, at least a twenty-foot deep buffer for at least thirty percent of the Highway twenty-six frontage. And this is just kind of to retain the existing trees and plant a mix of native vegetation along the highway. This would not be required in the R two zone. And so potentially, we would lose that landscape buffer along the highway. So when we brought this to planning commission, they reviewed all of this and are forwarding a recommendation of approval of both the comprehensive plan and zone change request. And they were supportive of the recommendation that the app can be required to maintain the landscape buffer that would be required under the current general commercial zoning. After the planning commission meeting, staff also realized that there is one other section that would currently apply to the C two zoning that wouldn't apply to R two. And that's based on a very specific interpretation that planning commission made regarding the landscaping section of our code, specifically seventeen ninety-two ten C, which just, which states that significant trees should be preserved to the greatest extent practical and incorporated into the design of development. So we as staff are recommending that this also be required similar to the landscape buffer requirement. But this was not run by planning commission as we didn't realize that it wouldn't apply to R two. It would only not apply to R two if in the future they were to subdivide the land. But we are recommending that that, this also be added. And that is the end.
Here, I've been talking and even called on Counselor Lee and nobody could hear me. So with that, before we get to the applicant's presentations, are any questions from council? I see a question from Counselor Lee.
Yes, my question was, what would actually occur on this lot? Would it be commercial buildings with housing above?
We don't know at this point. They're just requesting a zone change. So currently, it's zoned commercial. And that would, that would allow commercial with residential above or just commercial outright. And they're requesting to change it to R two medium density residential, which could allow multifamily or could allow, I think it could probably be subdivided if it can meet the density requirements to townhomes or something like that. But as far as I know, there's not actually a proposal. They're just, they're just requesting this own change. And I think the applicant can probably answer a little bit more about why.
Thank you.
I saw you pull back your hand.
I just got to make a comment as a realtor. Commercial use in this particular area would be a real tough one to find any kind of sale for. But residential, that's probably going to go pretty quickly. I would suspect that they'll be able to sell it and start development because of the pressure to make housing happen. Just an opinion from a realtor.
Any other questions for the staff or Counselor Pete Sold?
Yeah, so you mentioned the surplus or deficiency in R two and C two. How about in R three? What is the, and why did we not look at R three in this particular one? As we want higher density towards the center of our core as we go out. And this is the center of our core as far as Highway twenty-six goes. So curiosity is, what is our plus or minus on R three in the town? And why we didn't look at R three?
So this is not a staff-initiated request. This is an applicant request. So they've requested to switch to R two. I don't have the numbers. Kelly might know the R three surplus, but I don't know those. That's not what they requested.
Right, what I can tell you is, one potential thing is, the more dense you go, the more vegetation and the more opportunity to dig into the slope there. So the higher the density numbers, it will probably have a greater impact on the surrounding neighborhood as the development would be able to be larger essentially and more units put into it. But other than.
I understand that, but what is the plus or minus for the, our usage of R three? Or compared it to what we were given for R two? Okay. Anyways, I don't mean to delay it at all. I was, that was one of my questions I had. And then changing the surplus, that gives us a lot higher surplus for C or R two now than we had before and lowering our C two as well.
Yeah, so the C two, just a point of clarification that Emily pointed out is, the C two can, so you can't, when you do a zone change or a compliment change, you can't, you can't make a deficit. If you do, you're basically violating state statute, and then you'd have to correct it. So you'd have to immediately find another property to switch to commercial so that you no longer have a deficit. And I'm sure David Duke, our attorney, could go into more detail on that while I search for the surplus numbers. David, do you want to speak to that at all?
Hello, can everybody hear me okay?
We can, yes.
Okay. Yeah, I think Kelly summarized it really well, that, you know, normally when we see these types of margins, you know, with respect to surpluses or deficits, we just want to be, you know, very cognizant of, in a case like this, if you make the change, what impact that could have down the road. And his point about basically not getting into negative territory is true. And what you'd be looking at it, and not saying it's happening here, but obviously it's close. But you'd need to be looking at other lands at that point that would be candidates for planner and/or zone change amendments to make, to make up for that.
So, yeah, because that would bring it down to one point one acres. And then one other question was, this ends up making it an island. The property east of this, as I look at the map, if this was to take out, it would create an island of C two non-continuous with the other commercial land. Is that, was that considered in the planning commission or in the applicant?
I don't, I don't know. I don't think that, as far as I know, I don't think we have anything that says we can't do spot zoning. Typically, you wouldn't do it. But Planning Commission is recommending approval of this. And I don't, I don't believe they talked about creating the island to the east, but I know what you're talking about, so.
I think it's more policy decision. Like Emily said, I don't think there's any specific criteria within the development code or in ORS that I'm aware of that would prohibit it. And then the, your other question, Jeremy, right now, there's 12.6 acres of surplus of high-density residential, so slightly less than medium density.
Any other questions for staff before we go on to the applicant's presentation? Seeing none, we'll go to the applicant's presentation. You have 15 minutes. Who's the applicant?
So I believe Mr. Sonenberg is going to be speaking first. Is that correct, sir?
Well, I'll introduce it, but then Ron Kincaid's going to speak. So hi, I'm Carl Sonenberg. I'm a board member of Portland Community Church. And also with us tonight is our senior pastor, Ron Kincaid. He'll talk about how we got the land, how we ended up with it when we were at West Side Church, West Side of Portland. We also have Chris Hagerman with the Booking, the Booking Group, who is a planning consultant, and he'll talk about some things. We also have our real estate broker, Tom Shimoda, if there's any questions about the marketability of the land to date. But he wasn't planning on speaking unless there's questions. So with that, I'll let Ron take it from here.
Hi, I'm Ron Kincaid. Can you all hear me?
Yes, hello. Hello, Ron.
I'm, I live at 12937 Northwest Skyline Boulevard, Portland. I'm the pastor of Portland Community Church. On December 31, 2017, one of our members gave us a gift of this property in Sandy. It came with a potential buyer who's looking at putting in storage units. After their feasibility study, they dropped out and said it's not financially feasible for them. Then we contacted Tom Shimodo, a commercial Realtor, and he found a second potential buyer also looking at putting in storage units. Same thing happened with them after doing their study. They decided it wasn't financially feasible. At that point, Tom said to me, Ron, if you want to sell this, I think you're going to have to get it rezoned to residential. I think I could find several buyers, and I have several interested. But a commercial buyer, the property slopes too much. And you'd have to, from driving by on Highway 26, you would miss the commercial property by the time you had gone by it. So, so we are asking if you'd be willing to rezone it from C2 commercial to R2 residential. We think that's our best shot at selling it and probably Sandy's best shot at seeing this property used. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Carl?
So, okay, this is Carl Sonenberg again. And the other Carl I saw, he went to Oregon State in 76. Well, I'm even older. I graduated from Ball State in 75. I have my hat with me. Thank you for considering this. I'm also an architect, so I've worked in rezoning of different cities. Our firm's actually done some projects in your city. And one thing I just want to say upfront is the staff, Emily and Kelly have been great to work with, very good communicators. So you're being committed on that. I understand zoning doesn't happen every day. And as I think Counselor Jeremy mentioned, that, that is, you know, he has some questions about that, and I'll address those. Commercial use is an important part of the lifeblood of a city's economy. But some of the things I've seen as an architect, that you need visibility, you need good access, and you need a proper configuration of the land. Unfortunately for this site, is, I don't remember the last name, but the Carl, the Oregon State guy, he noted that there were several issues with it, as did Ron. First of all, it's on the inside of a curve as you're starting to leave the downtown. So as you're driving by, you have to, your eyes are looking ahead on the outside of the curve, but this is on the inside of the curve. If you do look over there, it drops off very quickly. And, you know, even like a three-story building down there would only barely be even with the top of the, you know, where you could see it from, from the highway. So then if you saw it, oh, there's a store or office I want to go to, how do I get to it? We have to drive on either past Avamere and some other road, and how do you get back there? Or if you're going the other way, you go past the church, there's a restaurant there, and you have to know to turn down and go by the post office and cut back somehow. So, you know, if people saw it, they wouldn't be able to get to it. Also, it's kind of steep, a little narrow, not a big parcel of land. So it just seems to have some challenges. Also, the location, there's already some commercial uses there on small parcels that are sitting there empty, at least when I looked last, was out there last. A lot of the commercial development seems to be on the west side, probably because it heads toward Gresham. You know, that's where people are coming and going. But on the other hand, residential use, mixed use, it fits in with Avamere, which is a property, it's zoned commercial, but it's Avamere assisted living and senior housing. So it's a very similar type of use, so the zone is different. Also, it would be a transition from US 26 and its busyness down to the single-family homes south of McCormick. And then there is multi-family zoning across the street, as you saw on the map. And then there's the Sandy Vista Apartments that are on to the west across the highway. In fact, some of the interests we've had are for affordable housing, but not all of the folks. It's also for higher density zoning. It's close to transit. There's two SAM lines that go by it. It's 4/10 mile walk to the transit center. So if people, you know, a group of people were living there, and you can get, you know, a fair number of apartments in there, it would be a good, in that respect. Page here. The utilities and services are good. Obviously, police service is very good. It's right across the street. We feel we've met the criteria. The landscape condition that was brought up with the planning commission, we thought we were fine with that. Chris will talk about the new condition that Emily mentioned. He has some questions on that. And then finally, we received two citizens' comments, either written or at the last hearing. One was, gee, that's open space. It looks like a park. It'd be a great place for a park. Well, I don't disagree, but we're, and we'd be happy to sell it to your recreation district, which you're trying to form. But I don't, that doesn't sound like it's in the works. I will say that residential has a better chance of a commercial to preserve a lot of those trees, have more of an open space feel, with smaller buildings that are more of appropriate scale. There's another question about the traffic, and that's always an issue in these zoning land use cases, as you probably noticed. But our Kiddlesbrough Traffic Engineers, they projected an 85% less traffic than what they allowed commercial use to be. So the traffic, you know, assuming that someday it's going to be developed, it's a low impact. Those are all my comments. Chris Hagerman might have a couple more questions. And I forgot to mention my address. I apologize. It's at 15140 Southwest Gibraltar Court, Beaverton, Oregon 97007. Thank you.
Chris?
Yeah. Hey, my name is Chris Hagerman. I'm with the Booking Group. We're at 1140 Southwest 11, Suite 500 in Portland, Oregon 97205. We're land use planners in the Portland metro area, so we do a lot of this kind of thing all over the place. Staff and planning commission were great. They did a lot of diligent work, and we thank you for the opportunity to be in front of you today. Carl steals all my thunder, so I'll keep it really short. The new tree condition is a little bit irregular, since we didn't get a chance to see it in the staff report. We didn't get to see it in front of planning commission. I have some technical questions about how a condition like that gets implemented. It's not clear to me if all development on this site in the future would actually go through a discretionary review where you could make a finding of least impact on the trees or most impact on the trees. Ultimately, I think it may be redundant with the buffer requirement, which will keep a substantial number of the trees within that 20 feet of Highway 26. And I think in most cases, residential development of this multi-family type is probably going to keep more trees in place than a commercial site. For example, the storage units that were originally envisioned for the site, obviously, we probably would have a very large footprint, removing a substantial amount of that landscaping. I think with the, with the development type of a middle, of middle-density multifamily, you're probably going to see a more successful and a lot more incentive to keep some of those mature significant trees. So this may be a redundant condition that I'm not sure how it gets articulated during the development review process in the first place. Carl highlighted the fact that the traffic on the local Wolf Street is going to be substantially less than under most types of commercial development, which is a net gain for the neighborhood. Ultimately, the question in front of you is whether this particular request for a comp plan change and a zone change meets the criteria for those two reviews. A surplus for commercial land will be retained. Therefore, it's consistent with the state goals. And therefore, we've met our burden of proof in terms of meeting the required criteria. I often think of this kind of procedure in terms of being a of the work that you guys do and the planning commissions do. We're doing your comprehensive plan, or you're doing your zone change, when you're doing your overall zoning plan. We then take the opportunity as applicants to come in and talk about site-specific constraints and say, this is why at this scale, something else makes a little bit more sense. And so that's what we're asking for you to do today. Everybody else, of course, has the same opportunity to do so. And the burden of proof is then on them in the future and the constraints that are in place at that time. Available for any questions. Thanks.
Any questions from counsel for the applicant? Okay, is there any more applicant testimony before I move on?
No, let's see, make sure. No, there isn't. We thank you for this time, and but we're still here for any questions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much for the presentation and for joining us this evening. With that, we'll move on to public testimony. Here's some guidelines for those who may wish to speak. Please try to avoid repetition. If someone else has already expressed the same thoughts, it is perfectly all right to state that you agree with that statement of a previous speaker, even if that's all you say. If you have documents, maps, or letters that you wish to have considered by the body, they must formally be placed in the record of this proceeding. To do that, either before or after you speak, email your materials to recorder@ci.sandy.or.us and staff will make sure your evidence is properly taken care of. As a reminder, testimony for this public hearing will be called for in three groups. Testimony in favor of the proposal, testimony opposed to the proposal, and neutral testimony. If you're participating online, click the raise hand button at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. If you're participating via telephone, dial *9 to raise your hand at the appropriate time and wait to be recognized. I will now call for any testimony in favor of the proposal. You will have five minutes each, and please remember to state your name and mailing address for the record. Jeff?
Okay, Mayor, so we'll just give it a moment like we usually do, waiting for any hands to be raised for testimony in favor of the proposal. Mayor, I do not see any hands raised.
All right, I'll now call for testimony against the proposal. Remember, state your name and mailing address for the record. You'll have five minutes.
Okay, Mayor, we have Kathleen Walker. I'm going to press the button. Ms. Walker, you should be able to unmute yourself, and please state your name and address for the record. Ms. Walker, can you hear us? I think you should be unmuted now. Let's just give it a moment, Mayor. I see that we're having just a problem unmuting here.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Sorry. Kathleen Walker, 15920 Southeast Black Road, Sandy, Oregon. Thanks. I'm not totally against this, but I, I have a couple of concerns. One, one is a question I'm wondering if can be answered. Two weeks ago, you voted that, I believe it was C1, or I wasn't, can't remember if it's C1 and C2 or not, requires no parking. Does that decision two weeks ago apply to this piece of ground?
I will look for it, probably. But my understanding is, since it's not going to be C2 or C1, if we say yes to changing it to a residential designation, then it would have any residential parking requirements. And if it is zoned as a commercial residence, which it currently is, then it would be an apt here to any parking requirements, which we voted to get rid of in the, in the C1 zone. Kelly, is that correct? You're muted right now.
This is in Zone C1, it's Zone C2.
C2, yeah.
Yeah.
So it wouldn't, it's not affected by the decision two weeks ago? Is that right?
I, if you just asked her questions, and then we can respond to them in staff recap.
Okay. So yeah, I mean, again, that's we're not, not knowing what the answer to that is. I would be concerned about any proposal that is, that includes residential with no parking. That would be a pretty much a nightmare for the neighbors out there and also for the local businesses adjacent to that, including Avamere and the Red Shed and all that. The second concern I have is that you also have several parcels of land that are coming in as planned unit developments that propose to, hold on, I gotta get the squeaky toy out of the box now. That propose to get rid of the, you know, planned unit developments, they, they pretty much can kind of overrule the, the zoning that they have and ask for more dense zoning. And I know that just to the south of here, you've got that proposed on the parcel to the west of, to the east of Deer Point. That's commercial, and they're proposing medium-density zoning. And so I guess the big concern I have is, you know, is it kind of first come, first served that gets the zoning changes to medium density? Or is that, is there some kind of an overall plan that, you know, knowing that these planned developments can change their zoning, there's going to be some, you know, some sort of a need to kind of take a look at which areas can upzone to medium, you know, higher densities and which can't. It is, you are going to run into your limitations on what the land use regulations are with your 2040 comp plan. So I'm just kind of curious, from a process standpoint, how do you, you know, not to say that we shouldn't say yes to this, but my concern is that then you've got all these other ones on the docket who are also proposing to upgrade their densities on their parcels or change them from commercial to higher-density residential, which, again, it's going to kind of, you know, kind of come back to, to, you know, change what your decision space is on all these other parcels. So is there a process for that? Those are my kind of concerns, is that if you haven't thought through the parking issues and the, and the high-density zoning changes for other parcels, making this decision at this time tonight might be a little premature. You might want to kind of take a look at that before you make the final decision. That's my input, and I appreciate you guys listening to me. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Kathleen. We are now looking for additional testimony against the proposal. Members, participants can click raise your hand button at the appropriate time, which would be now. Or those of you participating via telephone can dial *9 to raise your hand.
Mayor, I do not see any more raised hands.
All right, at this time, I'll now call for neutral testimony, general comments, neither for nor against the proposal. Remember to state your name and mailing address for the record. You will have five minutes. We will now wait for someone to raise their hand.
Mayor, I do not see any raised hands.
Kelly, Emily, I will now look for your staff recap and recommendation.
All right, so to address the, the second landscaping thing first, 179210C, it would actually still apply to this property as R2, provided the property doesn't further subdivide. So in that sense, it's a moot point for that. If the property does subdivide, based on this weird planning commission interpretation, it wouldn't actually apply. Chris is right, though. I mean, it's probably somewhat redundant in that the trees that would be practicable to... retain would be the ones most likely along the highway on that slope anyway, and not at the kind of main base of the site. Either way, just to, you know, keep it consistent, that would apply for certain right now. And there's a possibility it wouldn't apply in the future. So we're recommending that we just require it to apply since it would now. In terms of parking, the, the switch to R2, I do believe for our multifamily parking requirements, and Kelly can step in if this is wrong, but I think we did reduce for three or greater bedrooms. I think the parking is now just two spaces instead of 2.25 spaces per unit. So that, that would change slightly in terms of this. I mean, that would be affected, I guess, if this were to switch to R2. That, and, and then in the future, were to develop as multifamily housing, that that requirement would be slightly reduced than what it was last month. In terms of the density and first come, first serve, I mean, any zone, any zone change request would have to come back through the same process. So it would go through a planning commission and then to city council. As both David and Kelly mentioned, we actually cannot approve a zone change that would result in a deficit. So if this one is approved, we would still have a 1.1 acre surplus of commercial, which would mean that if another request came through that asked for, say, a two-acre conversion from commercial to residential, we would not be able to approve that without finding, without the applicant finding another piece of commercial land or another piece of land that they could rezone to commercial. So with any zone change request, we, we do have to review all those analyses and update all those figures about the surplus and deficit, and we cannot go into a deficit. So that would be evaluated independently. And yeah, in that sense, it is kind of first come, first served. Although, you know, you can also think about the future and if there are other properties that make more sense to do a change on, I mean, you can think about that now. But a, as of now, with this going through, and this, that's what Planning Commission recommended, we would not be in a deficit, so it would not be illegal at the state level.
Yeah, I'll add a couple more thoughts to that. The PUD question, PUDs are allowed in all zones in Sandy. So a P, a PD can be applied for in the current zoning. A PD can be applied for in the proposed zoning. And a PD can be applied for any other zoning that this property could potentially go to. So I'm a little confused about what the question or the, not really the question, but the feedback around PUDs were. But I don't see this having any impact on those. I think Emily got it 100% correct on the parking. And then the only other thing I'll add is with House Bill 2003, which you may or might not remember, but that's the one that's mainly dealing with buildable lands inventories. The city of Sandy is going to have to complete another buildable lands inventory by the end of 2024. So in approximately four years from now, we'll be looking at all our lands again and reassessing our surpluses and deficits and everything else. So when we did the one in 2015, I don't think we had done one. We had done one like eight years before that, but they used some factors and some information that I don't think was entirely accurate. And then we had the housing, you know, then we had the downturn in the economy. And then we redid the urbanization report with some new analysis and kind of some new facts. And that came with a different result. So in 2024, in about four years from now, staff will have to undertake another buildable lands inventory. But as Emily said or pointed out, that yeah, it is kind of a first come, first serve deal. That's all I had.
Okay. And with that, we will move on to rebuttal by the applicant. You have five minutes. Carl?
Okay, thank you. Don't have a lot to add. I think Emily and Kelly did a good job and I appreciate Ms. Walker's comments. It, it was clear to me she, she has thought through these things. As far as a, you know, she mentioned, this is, you know, she's concerned about higher density. But this is actually a less dense development, is measured by the traffic anyway. And then we, as Kelly mentioned, we, Emily, we will still require, have to have parking. If it stayed C2, it sounds like we could get by with a lot less or, you know, not be required. So, so hopefully that answers her questions. And I don't know if Chris might have something else to add, but if not, I just want to thank you again for your time this evening. And I'm over, I'm done now. So Chris, did you want to add anything?
No, I think I'm good at that point. I think the questions were great and I think the responses by staff are great as well.
Yeah, so that's all. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. With that, I'm looking for a motion to close the public hearing.
A move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
So motion by Councilor Exner, a second by Councilor Smallwood to close the public hearing. Jeff, will you do a roll call vote?
Councilor Petezel?
Yes.
Councilor Smallwood?
Yes.
Councilor Hamblin?
Yes.
Councilor Lee?
Yes.
Councilor Exner?
Yes.
Councilor Schultz?
Yes.
Mayor Pollian?
Yes, so I will now close the public hearing as of 8:01 on April 20th. Moving on to discussion by the hearing body. Discussion.
Well, I brought up those concerns I had and it stems from more around C1 and C2 in wanting to protect specifically C1. But that was, you know, only a couple lots down the street from it that we did that here a few years ago. As we lose C1, we are getting it back. But this isn't C1, this is C2. So, um, you know, the concerns I had of creating an island with that was more of an observation than anything. Appreciate the answers around the R3 aspect. Not trying to create more density, but I was just more curious why that was not, from other comments I've had over the years, be more dense in the center and less dense as you go out from the core. So I do appreciate that. Anyway, I'm, I'm fine with it as that. I just want to be very cautious and recognize that it does bring us down to 1.1 acres of, you know, on the commercial. But, you know, we're only moving a couple acres. It's not like, you know, we're taking 20 acres and pulling it away and leaving 1.1. There's only a couple acres to start off with, from that point of view. But it would be nice to reclaim some of that property or future tax revenue.
Thank you, Councilor. I, I tend to agree and I, I think this proposed project fits very well into the neighborhood that it's proposed for. Councilor Exner?
Yeah, I don't want to repeat things that Council Petezel said because I agree with what he's talking about there. To me, I'm very advocate of keeping those trees up alongside the edge of the highway. I think it's one of those things that, as far as holding the soil, being able to keep some of the old growth trees and with our community and as part of the Sandy style, as well as part of the environment that we were trying to produce more of a green effect within our community. I really want to advocate for that. The other thing that I really am concerned about, but in this particular case, this one benefits this particular need, is the transportation. This particular zoning change would reduce the amount of transportation, average daily trips by 120, I think it is, 100, over 100 trips per day. And really, both Wolf and Langinsand has a number of transportation issues. And I know that the transportation engineers said this wouldn't be any, any issues in terms of inputting into the community. And I guess if it's reducing by 100 plus per day, I guess that's a real positive input. I personally think, especially on the Wolf Street side of the exit or entrance into the Highway 26, we have a number of really difficult situations happening up there. Our congestion, the light issues, things happen during different times of the year. We've got some high-impact timings that those, that street is just about queued up here from the street light down to the four-way stop. And I'm sure that it will be increasing when those six townhomes get constructed and sold and put in there. But for really, for me, it's a help. So I'm really an advocate of this one. And I'll be looking with interest to see how the next purchaser, developer of this one deals with those issues on the transportation side of that. But pretty, I'm pretty much in favor of this. Want to make sure we advocate for those trees.
Councilor Lee?
Yes, I don't see any issues with the proposal. I'm always looking for the possibility of multifamily housing that could be affordable housing. And the county is still looking for projects in our small rural cities. So my only hope would be to see something there someday. Good project or a good proposal.
Wonderful. With that, is there anyone that wants to call for a first reading ordinance 202004 by title only?
I'll call for. Go ahead, Carl.
I'll call for a first reading by title only.
I'll second. There's been a motion to call for first reading, a second by Councilor Smallwood. Jeff?
So just to clarify, Mayor, did we need to take a vote on that motion to read it? Or did you want me to go ahead and read the?
My apologies. I guess we'll take a number of votes tonight. We'll do a vote by roll, please.
Okay, Councilor Petezel?
Yes.
Councilor Smallwood?
Yes.
Councilor Hamblin? Councilor Hamblin appears to be muted. So I can record that as an abstention. Councilor Lee?
Yes.
Councilor Exner?
Yes.
Councilor Schultz?
Yes.
Mayor Pollian?
Yes.
And just for a point of clarification, is that include the additional recommended condition from staff? Or does it just include what Planning Commission recommended to you?
My motion should have been with the trees.
I thought we were voting on just having the first reading. That was what Jeff was trying to clarify.
Yeah, I thought, that's what I thought too, just the first reading.
So we need to have a reading of it first before we vote.
Correct.
The ordinance is ordinance 2020-04, an ordinance amending the City of Sandy Comprehensive Plan Map and Zoning Map by changing the Comprehensive Plan Map and Zoning Map Designation for 2.47 acres. And then Mayor, there can be a motion to approve the first reading, if you like, or?
Yeah, I'm looking for a motion to approve the first reading.
A motion to approve the first reading.
Second.
Does that include the amended changes that were requested?
And, and I can speak to that if it, if it helps. The way I read the ordinance is drafted is that it, it would include that second condition. It incorporates by reference the staff report before you tonight, which has that second condition. So if that's something that the council, you know, wants to see, I think adopting the ordinance as it is fine. And if, if not, then we just want to make, at the very least, make that clear for the record. What I would probably also recommend is between this, between adopting the first reading, coming back and having the second reading and just making that clarification in the text as well.
So David, do you want me to redo it or are you good with what I did?
So I, I think it's just a matter of whether the, the, the council's wishes on that, that second, I guess, the condition that, that the Planning Commission didn't consider. And so if, if you want to keep it in, the council wants to keep it in there, there's nothing more you'd have to do.
I think the council does want to keep it in there, so we'll just continue for it.
Okay, so my motion stays.
Okay.
I'll second it if no one else did. I can't remember.
I don't believe anyone did.
Yeah, that's right, Councilor Schultz. Councilor Schultz did it, so we're in.
I'll only accept Councilor Schultz's second.
So we have a motion to adopt the first, approve the first reading by title only by Councilor Hamblin. A passionate second by Councilor Schultz. Jeff, will you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilor Petezel?
Yes.
Councilor Smallwood?
Yes.
Councilor Hamblin?
Yes.
Councilor Lee?
Yes.
Councilor Exner?
Yes.
Councilor Schultz?
Yes.
Mayor Pollian?
Yes. All right, is there a call for the second reading?
Mayor, I'd like to have a call for the second reading.
Second. There's a motion by Councilor Petezel, the second by Councilor Exner for the second reading. Jeff, will you do a roll call vote?
Or shall I read the ordinance first, Mayor?
I don't know, Jeff. Last time you interrupted me and wanted me to vote again, so I'm just trying to follow your rules, brother.
Ordinance 2020-04, an ordinance amending the City of Sandy Comprehensive Plan Map and Zoning Map by changing the Comprehensive Plan Map and Zoning Map Designation for 2.47 acres.
Make a motion to approve the second reading.
I'll second that one.
There's a motion by Councilor Hamblin to approve the second reading, and a second by Councilor Petezel. Jeff, will you do a roll call vote?
Councilor Petezel?
Yes.
Councilor Smallwood?
Yes.
Councilor Hamblin?
Yes.
Councilor Lee?
Yes.
Councilor Exner?
Yes.
Councilor Schultz?
Yes.
Mayor Pollian?
Yes.
Thank you for your patience with that.
All right, absolutely. All right, moving on, and old business for the appeal of the Bailey Meadows deliberation. I guess first I'll just thank you to Ron, Carl, Chris, and I think you had your Realtor on here, Tom. Thank you guys for participating tonight. Congratulations on the decision.
Okay, thank you very much. And if that, we'll excuse ourselves if that's appropriate.
Unless you're enjoying yourself, you feel free to go.
Well, if I'd gotten to come out there, I would go to one of your little restaurants out there, maybe down the street, but I'll have to wait till next time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
All right, so now the Council, Sandy City Council will now conduct deliberations concerning land use file number 20-009 AP Bailey Meadows subdivision. This application was approved by the Planning Commission on February 11th, 2020, and was subsequently appealed by several residents to the city, Sandy City Council. The city council held a public hearing on this matter on April 6th, 2020, after which the official record remained open for seven additional days. The hearing and record are now closed and the council will proceed to deliberate and make a decision regarding the application. First, I'd like to start by asking a question. Does any member of the council wish to declare any additional ex parte contact beyond those declared during the April 6th public hearing? And please note that ex parte contacts include additional site visits.
Nope.
Me neither. Kelly, would you like to provide us with a staff update, public testimony process review?
Yeah, I just have something that'll probably take two, three minutes to run through.
Okay.
Okay, I'm assuming everybody can see that.
Yes.
Okay. So I just wanted to give kind of a reminder, essentially, I'm not going to go through criteria or the facts or any testimony, just because I think you've seen that ad nauseam. I went through that pretty exhaustively last time in early April, and then you heard public testimony. I'm just going to go through some key dates and then some hearing reminders, just to kind of remind everybody what the process was and where it started and where we are at now. So the key dates prior to the hearings, the application was actually submitted in July of 2019. We deemed it incomplete in early August. The applicant provided some of the missing information and then per state statute, which they're allowed to do, they asked for it to be deemed complete. So it was deemed complete on August 22nd. They then held a neighborhood meeting, which the applicant did not have to do, but they decided to do in the public library on September 18th, 2019. I attended that meeting. I think I was the only staff member there and the public and then the applicant. At that meeting, I, I did voice that I was concerned without providing Gunderson Road. So I was a, I guess, a proponent of the, or a opponent of the early proposal without providing a second means of access. And I made that known at that neighborhood meeting. So then we went into Planning Commission hearings. So then we went into planning commission hearings. We had the first one on December 17th, where the planning commission only took testimony and that was all they did. We then had a second testimony meeting with more information from staff and the applicant on January 23rd, 2022 or 2020. That was followed by open record period number one, and I have the exhibits listed here. That was then followed by open record period number two. So on December 17th, before that meeting and then during that meeting, you could submit testimony. January 23rd, again, at the meeting and before the meeting, and then the open record periods, you could submit written testimony during both of those record periods. Then on a February 11th, the planning commission reconvened similar to what you're doing tonight, and they did not take any additional testimony. They just made a decision. They issued the final order on February 14th. And then the appellant's appealed that decision on February 26th. Then in March, we were originally scheduled to have a meeting on March 16th. We all know why that was canceled. I'm not going to belabor that or go into that. Then on April 6th, you heard testimony from the applicant and the appellant and the public. And then we had a basically a third open record period, but the first one since the appeal period where people could then submit written testimony once again. And those are exhibits seven P through eight Z. And that is pretty much all I have. So I'm going to stop my screen share at this point. And that's that was just kind of walk you through the different opportunities that people had to comment, both in writing and also at meetings. And then also to just give you kind of an understanding of, we've actually, I think the pre-app was last February. So we've actually been in talks with this applicant for about 14, 15 months now, and the official application was last July. So it has been a rather long process for staff, the applicant and the property owners and neighborhood and neighbors. So I'm assuming at this point, everybody's one way or the other, happy to come to some sort of resolution and move forward.
Thank you, Kelly. With that, we'll move on to council deliberations. I'll go ahead and kind of get us kickstarted here. This is obviously been a difficult one. Especially this is my first, my first big land use decision as a newly elected mayor here just over a year. You know, I believe being elected mayor in this community, I have three real responsibilities that comes with that. One is to provide a leadership and vision for our community, which I think we all can speak to right now with what's going on, the crisis that faces us with COVID-19. The second is to represent our sandy neighbors to here at our city council level and to represent their interests and concerns and their questions to our sandy city council. And then the third is to act as an unbiased judicial member here for our community to ensure the proper implementation of our city code into our community's public and private development projects. Tonight, here on city council, myself as a council member, we're asked to serve a capacity number three. As an unbiased judicial member here in our community to ensure the proper implementation of our code into community, public and private development projects. So it's in this capacity that I've spent a lot of time over these last several days, weeks, as Kelly talked to months, studying the public record of both sides of the appeal in front of us tonight. To me, we must stand by our municipal code. The subdivision approval standards at seventeen point one oh oh point six oh E. Item four states that the adequate public facilities are available or can be provided to serve the proposed subdivision. So what is adequate? Well, our own city transportation systems plan states that the traffic capacity on local streets should be between 800 and 1,000 trips. This proposed project trips are looking to exceed these marks by almost three times that amount. As for the can be provided section, has been well documented in the press and our city council meetings. We as a city simply do not have the financial resources, nor will we in the foreseeable future to improve these public facilities and nobody else is offered to pay for. So with that said, and I'm open to council discussion with as much of an open mind as possible. I do want to be straightforward and clear that I am heavily leaning towards denying this application as a result of it not meeting item four subdivision approval standards seventeen point one oh oh point six O E. So just want to start off with allowing council to kind of get a feel for where I'm at on this. And with that, I'm up for further council deliberation. Counselor Lee.
I agree with what you mentioned in regard to the traffic study and the impact on that. And I cannot support the project. Our requirements that strategies mitigating the problem need to be considered when this level of service deficiency is in place have not been met. The applicant has chosen not to take an action that would move us further toward that mitigation. So I will not be able to support the project.
Sorry, I muted myself. Counselor Exner and then Pete's old.
Okay, I didn't really actually raise my hand, but I was waiting for Jeremy to.
Oh.
That's okay. Standing there, we're just waving at each other.
Well, you guys can wave and I'll go ahead and say what I'm thinking. I'm also highly concerned about the impact of the transportation of this development on the Melissa Road. It's just, it's incredibly over impacted with this development. Don't want to go over the details that the mayor's already made. But that's really concerns me and I just don't see how I could vote for this development to go forward with that in mind. I also don't see how the city could do any kind of paying for the road out to Gunderson onto the highway 211. It just, it's got to be on the backs of the developer. That's just for me for safety, having only one exit. We've talked about this before in the bluff development where we have one in and out egress for the development and all the concerns about safety is just paramount in my mind, not counting the impact of the transportation issues and congestion and so on. I don't believe that there's been discussion that precedent has been set. I think it's in the Silverton city about how the similar situation came up and Luba denied their decision. I think that's, there's some other extenuating situations in that decision that had a big effect on that decision. And I don't think we're on as weak status as that would be leading us to believe that if those hadn't been there. So I'm thinking we're pretty strong in terms of being able to say you do indeed have a reason to deny this. We've got some precedent from some similar decisions in the past, at least the precedents don't indicate an argument against this. And I'm really, I just don't see any other alternative other than to require a second entrance to this thing. So that's my statement.
Counselor Pete's old.
Yeah, I'll keep it brief. Yeah, I I find the same stuff that you had mentioned there, Stan. You know, and doing some reading through the code as well and and being on the planning commission with Carl in the past, as well as seeing a few of these things come through city council in my tenure on here. No, I think we've already set some precedence already with other developments in following what our code says. And so, yes, you referenced it, Stan, but yes, seventeen dot one hundred dot sixty E dot four of being adequate. We use that as well in the bluff neighborhood. And requiring two additional entrances, but then on top of it, seventeen dot one hundred dot three ten required improvements. And in that, it says the following show, following improvements shall be installed at no expense to the city. Consistent with design standards and the chapter, except otherwise provided in relation to oversizing. And I don't believe this is an oversizing aspect in how I read it. And and dot I, it says streets as well as a lot of other things. And so, and we have a precedence, we have one there that Jewelberry had to be built out in one direction and Bell in another for that development. So standing on that as well. We don't, I do not find that the streets that were provided that they were paying for and putting in was adequate. So I would vote no.
Counselor Smallwood.
Is that short, Jeremy? That was short?
Hey, it wasn't as long as Pulliam.
Hey, I can get long-winded, but not as much as a Stan or Carl.
I'm just teasing you. I'm just teasing you. Just, I agree with everything everybody else has said tonight. I also cannot support. You know, acceptance of of this proposal, basically off of safety. And so just not to repeat what everybody else has said, but to just get on record in agreement with with the rest. That's it.
All right, Counselor Schultz.
Yeah, I've learned a lot about our code and what all these things mean, reading through thousands of pages of documents through this whole thing. And what I keep coming back to is we do have these clear standards that are not being met in this proposal. So for that reason, I cannot support it as written. With adding that many daily trips to our small Melissa Avenue over there, I can't support it.
All right. So that's as far as hands up for counselors that I've seen. And so if there is any motions of approval or denial, we can take those at this time. David.
Then mayor, one second. So one thing I wanted to raise, I guess, two things. Obviously, one of the things that you've heard a lot about throughout this process got down to really some very kind of narrow and frankly, rather confusing for the vast majority of people, legal arguments. One had to do with limited land use decisions and whether the standard regarding ADP is incorporated into your code. And the other one has to do with this concept of clear and objective standards. And so I just want to kind of reiterate, you know, that that's an issue. I've got, you know, as I've said before, and some memos in the in the file about it, some some concerns about how that plays out. I'm not and have not said all along that I think it's a slam dunk that, you know, you simply can't make a decision or findings to support denial. But I just, you know, want to be sure that, you know, in in all of the testimony that you've received that that concern, you know, isn't isn't lost. The second thing I wanted to say is, and I don't know, just by doing a sort of general kind of, you know, head count here. That if with respect to these types of applications for housing, there is yet another statute that comes into play that we have to be aware of. It's a process question as so many things and land use get to. And that is before you were a council, a city officially moves to deny an application for housing. And this is statute one nine seven five two two. It has to afford the applicant an opportunity to either propose a condition, a different condition, or propose a revision to the application to satisfy, in this case, the council's concern. So I think that subject to hearing, you know, from any other counselors, again, like I said, it looks like right now, if you took a vote, there would be a majority to support a denial. I think we need to allow for the applicant that opportunity if they want to, to propose some change to the application. They don't have to take that, but we do need to make sure that from a matter of procedure that we we offer that.
Okay, so what does that look like then as far as our next motion goes, David?
I think at this point, like I said, just judging from the sort of head count, I would allow for the applicant that opportunity now to see if they have any interest or another either change or condition that they would propose. If they do not, then I think you go back and you can make your motion. If they did want to do that, the statute says that the city at that point would get to pick a new 120 day deadline. And so presumably there would be another time that we would have at some point in the future where they would offer either that amendment or that condition. The council would consider that, and then you would make a final decision on on the application.
So at this time, should we go ahead and move to make that offer to the applicant?
I believe you should.
Yeah. Okay, great. Let's go ahead and do that. I guess that would be to you, Jeff, to bring them up and ask them that question.
Okay, mayor, I'll look at the list of attendees, see if we have anyone. And I do believe that Mr. Robinson is raising his hand. The applicant's attorney. So I'm going to go ahead and click allowed to talk. Mr. Robinson, you should be able to unmute yourself now, sir. Can you please state your name and address for the record?
Sure. Thanks, Jeff. Michael Robinson, last name spelled R O B I N S O N. Mail address is one one two one Southwest Fifth. Suite 1900 Portland nine seven two oh four. So mayor, thank you, and thank you, David, for raising that statute. What what I'd like to propose, because I haven't had a chance to talk to Cody about this. The applicant is or rather than the proposed mayor, I'm wondering if council would take a five minute break and let me speak with my client over the phone. And then when you're finished with your break, I can come back and and give you our answer.
Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you, mayor.
So why, absolutely. So why don't we go and temporary adjourn until eight thirty eight? Not adjourn recess, recess.
Oh.
Reconvene our council meeting.
Mayor, are you ready for me to unmute Mr. Robinson?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Robinson, I believe you're able to speak now.
Thank you. You know, mayor, you may like this virtual hearing stuff. You get to mute attorneys at will. Special deal. Can I have two more minutes? I'm going to walk away from my screen. I haven't quite finished my conversation with my client.
Yep, no problem.
Thank you, mayor. I'll be right back.
Gives you more time to pick on me.
That's right.
Or Carl.
Hey, Jeremy, I was going to ask you, are you still doing your mile a day? Are you still running every day?
Yeah, let's see. What's today? Today is, not that you guys even care, but.
He sees the Pauliam's running by his house every afternoon. He can't do it now.
I saw you out running. I saw you out running the other day, Stan. I honked at you when I rode by, but you had your headphones in.
So we get into these intervals, you know, these run, walk, run. But whenever we start to round around the Pete's old house, I look at Mackenzie, I say, we're running, damn it.
Oh, I love it. Yeah, we're at one, today was 1,244 days in a row.
Good for you.
But here's the, here's, I get a brag on my kids. My middle son, he's 11. He's been going out and got him an old phone with Nike on it, and he can tell how far he's gone. And so he's just been working up five and a half, six and a half miles or whatever. He decides, let's go to OTA. So we ran from here all the way to OTA where they go to school. On the way, you know, past a couple of friends' house and we stood in the parking lot or the driveways and waved. And then my wife came and picked us up. But then we ran, you know, a few more places. So it ended up being a little over seven miles. So my older son, he's 12, you know, you can't let your little brother beat you. So the next day we ran around town. I kept on saying, you know, we got to run a little bit more, just make sure we we've covered our bases because the middle one had gone out running. So we ran eight point one miles, the 12 year old. So when we get back, my 11 year old is already back and he's like, how far did you run? And when we said, you know, eight point one, well, he, you know, he can't cheat because it's, you know, GPS on the phone. He had ran eight point four. So today, you know, so today, now they're trying to outdo themselves. I don't know. I've competitive, I don't know if competitiveness runs in my family or not, but yeah.
They might run dad into the ground there.
I know, I know.
That little, that little girl of yours has it just a little bit. I think growing up in that house, the boys might have done it to her a little bit.
Oh, and she's the most talented. She is an amazing runner, talented. She's only nine, so. Oh, and she's the most talented. She is an amazing runner, uh talented. She's only nine, so watch out.
Not just around her, though. She's aggressive. You get her on that soccer field. Holy smokes.
Yeah, well, she has two brothers, yes. Make sure she comes out on top, but yeah. But it's been nice to have some nice sunny days for the weekends. I guess every day is a weekend now.
Looks like it's about to start raining here. Uh not so much tomorrow, but after that.
Another thing I noticed is when you get your kids out and they get running and, I mean, really running a few miles, they're too tired to fight when they get home. So, you know, they're more relaxed and uh that's the win for mom and dad.
Mayor, when you're ready, it looks like Mr. Robinson has returned.
Yep, I believe we're ready. Thank you, Jeff.
Uh Mr. Robinson, you are unmuted.
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, mayor, members of council. So I've talked with Cody, and here's what we proposed to council. By the way, we appreciate uh David raising the statute and council giving us this opportunity. There, and let me be clear, we're not waving any issues we've put into the record, but we're mindful of trying to be collaborative with the council and the community. That's why we made the conditions that we did offer. But it's hard for us to come up, having just heard the council's views, with either an amendment to the application or a condition of approval that might be both workable and feasible tonight. So what we proposed is that you give us um until April twenty eighth at five P M. to either submit an amended uh application or conditions of approval into the record. Uh we'll do our best to think about some way that addresses the issue that council has identified tonight. And then we would uh David's right, the the statute gives you the right to extend the clock, and we would like you to extend that clock by seven days or the minimum amount of time necessary to come to your next public meeting where you consider what we put into the record and then make your decision. And and mayor, I, again, I I often apologize for for saying things that I have to say as a lawyer. If if you're uncomfortable, if you and your colleagues on council are uncomfortable with that for any reason, then we would, in terms of extending the clock, but not for a long time, just enough to allow us to do work, because it it is difficult to try and think seriously about how we can address your concern on the fly like this. But don't extend the clock too much. If if you're uncomfortable with that, and and no judgment here, but if you're uncomfortable with that, then uh we appreciate that, and we would say, go ahead and make the decision. But we'd also like to take advantage of the statute and take a week now that we know what your issue is and see if there's a condition or amendment that would address your condition. Uh but we don't want you to lose any time on the hundred and twenty day clock. So that's why we're saying extended seven days or the minimum necessary to take you back to the next meeting and then allow you to make a final decision. So that's all I have tonight, mayor. I appreciate the courtesy in allowing us to talk.
Thank you. Appreciate it, sir. Uh David, do you have thoughts on that as far as how it pertains to our clock and our our timeline?
So the um uh and I'll, you know, in the interest of candor as well, uh was going through uh trying to see if this statute has ever really been dealt with uh in a in a reported case. And to my knowledge, it is not. Uh it was enacted in twenty fifteen, it looks like. Um and I don't, I didn't find any Luba cases that have dealt with it nor Court of Appeals cases. So the way it reads is that um it it basically is uh the applicant's decision at this point, whether it wants to offer uh an amendment or propose a condition of approval. And uh if they do, uh then uh the city uh is able to set uh a uh time limitation uh for final action. So one thing I might just seek to clarify, and and we can talk about what that time would look like, maybe we can do that now before I I asked the applicant to clarify. Uh what what Mike had said uh was that they'd have another week to put uh a something together, if they put anything together. Uh and then obviously the council would need to reconvene and consider that. Um I have no idea what your, you know, future schedule looks like. Uh council meetings being what they are, I know, especially in this environment, it can be difficult to get everything you need to do done. So um I guess maybe if that's a Jeff or Jordan mayor question, you know, if you had a uh, you know, it, would that be maybe the the May fourth? Is that feasible that you would come back and potentially consider this any change and make a decision that night? And if it's not, um I mean, I think you still have control, quote unquote, over the clock. I I I think it has to be reasonable uh for how long you extend it. Um but uh if not, then I think the option would be to say to uh the applicant, um you know, it's really their call as to whether they want to definitively consider this and propose a change. Uh and if that timeline, uh depending on when you could get back together and consider it, it's too long for them, then I think uh you'd make a decision tonight at this point.
Remind me, the applicant suggested the twenty seventh or the fourth?
I understand.
I know we name it, but what are what are our overall thoughts from council?
Well, I could say if um if he needs a week, um we're, unless we are really in a rush, why not just make our decision at the next council meeting on the fourth? Give them ten days to make their decision and proposal. Give us a few days to look at it before our next council meeting.
I I was gonna add, as the staff member that's been running this whole project, whatever timeline you pick is fine with me, but keep in mind, if it's that quick of a timeline, I'm not gonna have like a revised staff report. Probably not much analysis, if any. I might have some input I can provide if you want it, but um so it doesn't really matter to me what the timeline is, but if it's that quick of a turnaround, we have a lot of other projects going on, so I'm not gonna be able to contribute much to it.
Good point.
How much time would you need, Kelly?
More more than like two days, um because if they got everything to us on April twenty seventh or twenty eighth, we'd have to get it up on, I'm assuming, unless you guys wanted like put it up the night of the meeting, we would want to get a revised staff report and a recommendation up probably at least four or five days before the meeting. And that would give me like literally one day to turn around my analysis. It's an unrealistic timeline to do. I mean, there's nothing I can do really with that timeline.
Uh Jeremy?
Yeah, I would say uh probably no sooner than May eighteenth, which would be the second meeting, giving staff more time. I know it's not a lot of time, but it would also come after um the county's May sixth uh meeting as well.
Oh, good point.
Really good point.
Uh councillor Lee.
I was just going to say the same thing, the eighteenth.
And David, you don't see any reason, and I just, you know, first time mayor here, man, just trying to figure out the timing on everything. Uh timing-wise, that works out with all of our requirements and everything.
I'm sorry, mayor, was that a question to me or to Jordan? I didn't hear.
To you, David.
Yeah, so I I think, yeah, I think that's fine, because again, the statute is is doesn't really speak to this. So the way I would propose it is to say to the applicant, you could, you would be uh able to hear uh any proposed change or condition on May eighteenth. Uh and um, you know, that would, again, assume that they uh they did do it, that it would be um the change would be, you know, made within a week, so by next Monday. And then um I I think, you know, being consistent here with what we've done so far, if if today would have been the decision you made, if you would have made a decision tonight, uh the hundred and twenty day clock would have been um, sorry, I'm looking at my calendar as I'm doing this, at the twenty eighth. Uh so I would say uh, you know, if the eighteenth is the day that you were to hear it, uh that it would be a week beyond that uh that the hundred and twenty day would expire. So what would that be? The twenty, the twenty, the twenty-fifth?
No, that's, that's Memorial Day.
So it, good point, so the the twenty twenty-sixth.
Okay.
David, a process, a process question on the um the statute here. Uh does it say anything about providing further opportunity for the public comment on the new proposed condition?
It doesn't. Nope. It's completely silent on it. Um it it speaks solely to the applicant's ability to offer a uh a uh a change to the application or propose a new condition. It it does not speak at all to um, you know, what right, if any, uh the public would have to comment on that. I mean, I certainly think from a public process point of view and everything else that's tied into the land use system, that that's generally uh something that's afforded folks, especially if it's going to be new information. But uh I can't tell you that the statute requires it because it doesn't speak to it at all.
Yeah.
So are we thinking, everyone? I uh I think it's reasonable. Uh I'd like to hear what the uh applicant's attorney has to say in response, but um I I think it's reasonable. Everybody else kind of feeling that way?
Yep.
Okay.
And then Mr. Robinson actually had his hand raised until just a second ago.
Let's see if he wants to raise it. Let's let's ask him.
You are unmuted, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, mayor, members of council. So let me, based on what I heard from council and from Mr. Doofman, let me in taking into account staff's concern, let me just propose a schedule, and this is what we would be comfortable with. Um because, yeah, I'll just be candid with you, what we're thinking, we'd love to be able to get to a place where the council can find that we've done our job and can improve this. That's why we've spent so long trying to do this. But if it's gonna end up being denied anyway, we don't want to extend it a long time. I don't think that, and frankly, I'm not sure that serves anyone's purpose. So here's the schedule, and and councillor Exner, you suggested ten days. As long as we're gonna push this out so Kelly has enough time to write a report, we would appreciate the ten days. I, having stuff always do on a Monday is difficult. Um so we would propose that we have until close of business, five o'clock on the thirtieth, ten days from today, to submit either an amended application or a modified condition or conditions that address the issues we heard. And then we understand that you would come back to make a tentative decision at your meeting on the eighteenth. That means the staff report would have to be available to the public on the eleventh, so that's um that's eleven days for Kelly to issue the staff report. And then you um we would extend the clock. Right now, the hundred and twenty day period ends on the twenty eighth of April. We would extend it until May twenty-sixth for you to issue a final decision. And bear with me, I'm just looking, I know my client's listening to this. I'm just looking to see if I've gotten a text from him that I think that, I think that's within my authority to offer. So April thirtieth at five for applicant to submit an amended application or condition under the statute David cited. Five eleven for a staff report, five eighteen for a tentative decision, and until May twenty-sixth uh for the count, for the city to issue a final decision. And so we're, we would extend the clock by twenty-eight days. And my client says fine. So if that's acceptable to council, it's acceptable to the applicant mayor.
I'm seeing nods. So that's acceptable to us. We, um unless I hear something from staff, that's just outrageous, uh which I don't expect to. I think that's okay. Kelly, is that amenable?
I would like to um offer that it would be May thirteenth when the staff report would be ready, because that's when we typically issue the council agenda. We don't do them on a Monday, so then
And and to be honest, I don't think uh Mike and I and people that do a lot of this work are so, are so dialed into that seven days prior uh requirement, but that's, that's really geared towards the staff report that would be arguably for the even the initial hearing. Uh we are um pretty far away from Kansas at this point, so I I don't see that as necessarily being uh applicable. Uh so personally, I think if you had a a revised, uh really what it amounts to is more or less an analysis of whatever change or condition they might come up with. Um I think having it on the thirteenth is 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 fine. I don't see any issue with that.
All right, great. Let's move ahead. Okay, so what do I need to do then procedural-wise to move forward, David?
So I think uh what we would say is that uh and if if this wants to just be uh so moved in a second, um that's that's totally fine uh based on what I'm gonna say. And if I get a date wrong or someone thinks I've got something uh wrong here, then uh please give me a shout. Uh but the applicant would have uh until April twenty seventh at five P M. to propose, at the week from today, to propose a change uh amendment or condition to the application pursuant to uh RS one nine seven five twenty-two.
I believe it was the thirtieth, David. I'm sorry.
Ten days.
There we go. Okay, perfect. Thank you. I wrote that down wrong. Uh have until the thirtieth uh to make that change or uh propose a new condition uh five P M. Uh and then um staff would uh look at that and produce a uh, I guess, what we'll just call a uh a revised analysis or a recommendation on that condition or that change, if any, uh by May thirteen. Uh and the city council would meet again on May eighteen to consider that, and at that point would make a decision uh based on any new condition or change to the application. Um and then um the one hundred and twenty day deadline would be moved to May twenty-sixth as a result of that. So
Councillor Schultz has a question.
Um maybe we could address this after, but are we going to talk about the public comment piece as well? Is that another vote or?
Uh no, I think we should talk about that now. I mean, I think that um you know, it, what it, what we get to is basically an unknown procedural issue with respect to the statute. So um, you know, my my inclination, uh just again, because this is sort of just consistent with how the the land use world works, is that there be an opportunity uh at some point during this process to allow for public comment. Just on that narrow, not opening up everything again, it would be on, you know, whatever uh the applicant might uh have in terms of an amendment or a proposed condition. Um but I I have seen enough of these cases procedurally where Luba will say, well, you know, that really should have been something that uh the jurisdiction allowed for public comment on. Candidly, it's also, I think, somewhat um in the applicant's interest, because um if that were to go up on appeal regardless of how the city council decides, uh and that were a basis for Luba to throw it back one way or the other, um that doesn't do the applicant any favors. So I I might suggest that we also hear from uh Mike Robinson on that piece as well to get his take. But my feeling would be that you do allow for some public comment.
Okay, I think we're about ready for a motion and the votes. We should probably hear from Mr. Robinson uh real quick on his feelings on the public comment period.
Mr. Robinson, you are unmuted.
Thank you, mayor. Um I appreciate what David had to say. I think that's good advice. So may I propose a schedule to you that would accommodate that? And and again, you know, I try not to be too difficult because we appreciate your, your working with us on this. So I'm looking at a calendar. So we applicant has until the thirtieth to propose a condition. Um because this is not the initial evidence you're hearing, and and David's free to comment on this, of course. I don't think you have any timelines that bind you. So I would say give everyone until the fourth to provide a public comment, give us until the sixth to provide final written argument, because the applicant is entitled to the last word, whether or not that helps, I don't know, with the proviso, mayor and David, that it should be limited to the amended application or an amended condition. You're not reopening the record, because then I I don't believe that's what you're trying to do here. So until the fourth for public comment, until the sixth for final written argument, Kelly has the ability to put a staff report in on the thirteenth, which is a week after the sixth, tentative decision on the eighteenth, uh the clock is extended, mayor, until the twenty-sixth for the issuance of a final decision.
Yeah, there's a, there's one problem with that schedule. Um so, yeah, so, well, one big glaring one to me. Um so if everything's submitted to us at five o'clock on April thirtieth, that that essentially, so the earliest staff would be able to get anything out to the public would be the first of May, first of May. And then you're essentially giving the public a couple of days to make comment.
May, may I make a suggestion then?
Yeah.
Thank you, mayor. So I think we could have something to you on the twenty eighth, Tuesday, the twenty eighth. It's not a Monday. That gives us enough time to consult internally and figure out what we'd want to offer, and we'd be able to talk with your staff if we needed to give the public until Friday, May, May first, because there are no deadlines or timelines, Friday, May first, and then we do our final written argument on Monday, the fourth.
Yeah. Any any councillors against that proposed timeline?
Up to Kelly.
Better than the previous. I guess, I guess it's just, do you want more public input or less public? Better than the previous. I guess, I guess it's just, do you want more public input or less public input on the revised conditions? Because that's still a pretty quick turnaround. But, you know, that's up to you. That's a policy decision, in my opinion.
I think you have a lot of energy from the public, and you're not going to have any problems getting people to respond. Especially because I'm sure the word will go out tonight. And they'll watch for this coming up.
Right, but they don't know what to respond to, right? Like, because none of us know what the proposal's going to be.
Can I add one more thing? I'm sorry. So what, the appellants have an attorney. So if, if the attorney wants, if the appellants want to give their attorney time to look at it and then respond, and then the appellants would respond to the, on the attorney's advice, you know, if they get the information on the 29th, I don't think that's a realistic turnaround to have advice back from their attorney and then for them to have written comment two days later. I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to be realistic about giving the public, if we're going to give them an opportunity to comment, we should give them an actual opportunity to comment, not one or two days.
What about if that time for the comment, for the public to comment went until Monday, the 4th? That would seem to allow for that. I mean, that's a, that's a pretty reasonable amount of time. I'm thinking that with whatever may be offered, it's we've, you know, all looked through this application and the number of different, from a number of different angles. I don't, I don't think there's going to be a whole lot that would be changed or amended. Maybe I'm wrong, but should be fairly narrow at this point. And I would think that that would give, you know, anybody that's interested, fairly sufficient time to look at it and make comment on it.
Mayor.
Yeah.
The app, so if what David is suggesting is acceptable, skin looking, Mike, and David's right, this is, there shouldn't be, it shouldn't be a big submittal. It should be pretty, pretty straightforward. So what David is suggesting is the 28th for the applicant, Monday, May 4th for public comment, Wednesday, May 6th for final written argument, staff report a week later on the 13th, and deliberation on the 18th, that's fine with the applicant. And we'll be mindful of how much, you know, you got a lot of stuff in front of you. We're not going to belabor the point. We're going to make a fairly narrow proposal and, and see what happens.
Okay, great. All right, let's move ahead with a motion. Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Jan had a question.
Oh, did he, Jan? I apologize.
No, I was just going to make a motion to accept that schedule.
Wow, Pete told just skated right in front of Carl. Do you want to second that, Exner? All right, motion by Counselor Pete Zoll, the second by Counselor Exner on a proposed timeline.
I have to say, it was actually Counselor Lee that proposed it.
Right.
Well, you're, you're right. Counselor Lee's proposal, Counselor Exner seconded. On a proposed timeline is presented by Mr. Robinson. Jeff, will you do a roll call though?
Counselor Pete Zoll.
Yes.
Counselor Smallwood.
Yes.
Counselor Hamblin.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Exner.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Mayor Pulliam.
Yes. All right, thank you, everybody. Moving on, on the agenda, under new business, we'll move to Resolution 2020-07, the adoption of our Transit Master Plan. This Hal has been with us now for three hours and five minutes in order to do this presentation. Thank you for joining us. You're on.
Thank you. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for giving me your time tonight, because as you just stated, I know it's been a long and busy night, so I will try to be as clear and concise as possible for both of my agenda items tonight. To begin with, I'm going to give a quick background. As you see in the staff report on the Transit Master Plan, this whole process started in June of 2017. And a lot has happened between June of 2017 and now. So if you'll recall, we, you passed a resolution in 2017 that allowed me to apply for grant funds through the TGM program. Of course, that was awarded. The state and I then went through an RFP process and selected consultants. Once our consultant team was selected, we developed a scope of work, and the project actually kicked off in January of 2019. You've all met Michelle Poyo, who I probably just destroyed her last name. So if you're listening, Michelle, I apologize. She has been the lead on this project, and she has been amazing. I feel like I'm bringing you a very thorough Transit Master Plan. It's pretty heavy on the transit planning side. There's a lot of also internal policies and action items, mentions of other plans to be involved in in the future that will lead to further decisions. We kicked off again in January of 2019. They, the consulting team came in. They spent days here on site interviewing our staff. And they put together an existing conditions and choices report, which they brought to you in March of 2019. At that time, Michelle became before you and laid out what we would be looking at in this report, which is basically, what is the future of Sandy? What are some of our major choices and decisions that we need to make in this master plan? Are we looking for services that lend to high ridership, which is our fixed routes that tend to go inner city? Or are we looking for wider coverage across town? That is more of the dial-a-ride type service or small circulators. The next 11 months after that report, we spent consulting the public, riders, stakeholders. Michelle went before the Planning Commission twice. She's been in front of you three times now. They did a two stakeholder meetings. They spent two days at the Sandy Mountain Festival. They rode every line and surveyed. They did online surveys twice. They surveyed drivers, dispatchers here on site. They were just very thorough. So I have in this staff report, I'm sorry, I've got a couple of different computer screens in front of me now. So I have just some highlights that I thought are important to point out about the Transit Master Plan, which is that through all of that public outreach, feedback from you, the city council, feedback from the Planning Commission, the majority of respondents believe that regional service is slightly higher of a priority than local service. Local routes should be designed with the expectation that many riders will walk to a main street. So again, that's less coverage and more just main fixed routes, inner-city routes. The current balance is about right between services as we have right now. Sandy Transit spends about 60% of our revenue on our fixed routes that are inner-city and about 40% on our more dial-a-ride and in-town services. Everybody felt that that was about the right balance. People felt like getting places when it matters is more valuable than amenities. And when I say amenities, what I mean by that is very fancy bus stops or tech, you know, technology on the bus. They're more interested in getting somewhere. And, and I will say that we do annual surveys here, and we hear that a lot. When we ask for riders' suggestions for improvements to the service, most of what we get back every year is we just want more service, more service, more service. We identified potential service and capital investments. It was pretty exciting, and actually, especially at the Sandy Mountain Festival. Thank you. I just went completely blank on the word mountain. There was a lot of really positive feedback to having a route that goes to Clackamas Town Center. I was actually really surprised that that was as well-received as it was. But what I heard a lot of is I have doctor's appointments there, or I would love to go there to go shopping, and there's a lot of connections on the way. We also have identified improvements here in the building in this plan. We've identified equipment improvements. We've identified pedestrian and street connection improvements. There's conversations around what branding looks like in the future. And then, of course, I already mentioned that we do look at the various plans Sandy's currently involved in, such as Vision Around the Mountain, which is more in a background planning phase now due to recent events in our lives. But there is also a Clackamas Transit Development Plan that is still moving forward. There's also a lot of updated goals, a lot of policies, and a lot of action items based on those policies. So I have my hands full for the next several years based on this master plan. The interesting part, and, and Michelle, actually, we, we wrapped up, I think it was a week or two ago, when talking about the various comments that had come in and how we were dealing with them. And we look back on this plan process, and most of this planning process, transit, had just gotten a new source of state funding through the STIF plan. My federal grants are, were higher than they, than they have been in the past, and our local payroll tax was still coming in very strong. So most of this plan, we spent talking about prioritizing various projects to go in front of the STIF committee, and what routes did we want to add, and what are our capital improvements, and can we look at electric vehicles? One part of the plan also was to present two very different scenarios. One future scenario was called the bloom scenario, which we were in at the time, which is, well, you know, if funding keeps going this way, what are the different projects that we can prioritize, and which ones would we implement first? And then the gloom scenario was much more of, they had recognized during the process that I had some of the lowest operation costs in the state because of my local provider here. That was my consultant, my contract contractor. So they identified that as a possible gloom of having increased operations cost and possibly in the very near future. So the gloom has increased operations cost, and my local payroll goes flat, and my federal funds decrease. And then there's kind of scenarios of what a transit agency or what Sam would do if that scenario happened. So interestingly enough, in about one month's time, we went from a year-long process of prioritizing projects with a very bright bloom future scenario to really being grateful that we also have the gloom scenario included in this master plan. So we know either way how the future unfolds. We have a plan in here. So I come to you tonight. I did not make slides for this presentation, because I feel like you have seen these slides and this plan three times now. So I am recommending that you approve the Transit Master Plan, approve Resolution 2027.
Thank you, Andy, and thank you for all of your work on this. Yeah, went from boom to gloom in like four days. That said, though, I mean, also, not just COVID-19, right? We also lost our local provider, and it was just a series of events that all kind of came at the same time. So again, thanks for your work on this. You're right. We've seen it several times now. I know that, very engaged with stakeholders in our community through the process. So it's been just an outstanding process. Is there any discussion, questions, or a motion on the floor to adopt the Transit Master?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the Transit Master Plan unless, Carl, you were going to.
I was going to second it.
All right, great. There's a motion from Counselor Smallwood, a second by Counselor Exner to adopt our Transit Master Plan. Jeff, will you do a roll call though?
Sure. And I'm just assuming that it's to adopt Resolution 2020-07 as well.
That's correct.
Okay. Counselor Pete Zoll.
Hi.
Counselor Smallwood.
Yes.
Counselor Hamblin.
Hi.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Exner.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Thank you. And Mayor Pulliam.
Yes. All right, thank you. Congratulations, Andy.
Thank you. Thank you, all of you.
Moving forward, you wait a bit a while, but you get to be with us for a while. Moving on to Sandy Area Metro Operations Request for Proposals.
Okay, so this is where the real meat begins, possibly for the night. Again, I'm going to try to be clear and concise. I sent a very brief staff report, and that was because we were still in the RFP process, and I did not feel comfortable publishing information that was potentially confidential in a public setting. So earlier today, I did send you some numbers, but not a full report of everything that has happened regarding the RFP process. So at this point, I'm going to try to share a screen with you.
Did you share the numbers, or did you just share a PowerPoint with three slides on it? Because I had a PowerPoint with three slides, and two of them were blank.
Well, that's not good. Let's hope that's not what we get tonight. There was actually a chart at the bottom that had numbers on it.
I saw that the, if you opened the preview within your email, instead of actually downloading it, then it didn't, it didn't load the full chart.
That's what I did.
All right, thanks for that clarification. All right, so.
Solver. I didn't understand what she said, but that's okay. I'm looking forward to seeing your screen.
Me too.
There we go.
All right. Okay, well, some of the, some of my words are, have pictures on them, but essentially, I think I should be able to read it properly. So to get us going, can everybody see this slide 2020 RFP for Sandy Transit Operations? Okay, so basic information is that Sandy Transit received three bids from contractors. First Transit, MTR Western, and MV. As you know, because I did go in front of you a couple of times, one, to give you a basic structure of where we've been in the past and where we could go in the future, which included bringing the drivers in-house. It was always my intention to follow through with the RFP process, get the bids from the RFP, and then have Sandy's in-house costs for comparison. So so we went through kind of two different tracks. So I'm going to, I'm going to keep us on track for what happened with the RFP, and then I'll wrap back around to the City of Sandy cost. But you will see our cost included in this presentation. So just to let you know, we did have a selection committee of five individuals, myself, Mona Rustam, who's our program administrator, Dwight Brashir, who is the Transit Director for SMART. Just to give you a little background on Dwight, he's got about 35 years of transit experience. He has a little five-minute TED Talk, too. He's a very interesting gentleman. Teresa Christopherson is Clackamas County Services Administrator, and she's also the Project Coordinator for Mount Hood Express. So she's been with Mount Hood Express for, I believe, 13 years. Christina Babcock is new to Clackamas County. She's a transit coordinator. She will be putting, Clackamas County has some new shuttles that they are going to develop, and she will be in charge of that. She comes from Transit Operations background. So she was a director over about 350 drivers at TriMet. So this first slide is three-year cost projections for SAM only. And hopefully you can see, can you all see that there is a chart of numbers at the bottom? Yeah, okay, great. All right, so I, so as you can see from this chart, this does not have Mount Hood Express cost in it. And MTR does, is not represented on this chart, because they did not provide us with more than one year of data. So you just see that their, their cost proposal was 1.189747 and 65 cents for year one. You'll see in the next couple of slides, because I'm going to have a couple of these, there's a general pattern here where the City of Sandy cost is actually the better bargain in year one. And then MV. And then MV proposed, their proposal included upfront costs. So you see that theirs dropped a little bit in year two. We did not ask for more than two years. So for three years, I'm using estimates based on what they proposed in year one and year two. As you can see, First Transit is significantly higher than the other bids. So if I put them all together, this is the bid results for SAM and Mount Hood Express cost combined. And the idea, if you remember, was to bring all of the drivers in-house as Sandy employees and then contract with Mount Hood Express as we're currently doing to help with our cost. So again, you see that the City of Sandy's cost at 1.755712 in year one, I'm sorry, SAM and Mount Hood Express costs are, again, the better bargain. MV's drops in the second year and the City of Sandy's costs continue to climb. And the unfortunate part about the City of Sandy's cost is that they do climb quite significantly by year three. So most transit costs are proposed by a cost per revenue hour. SAM has about 20,000 revenue hours that we put on the street. So what you see here is just the breakdown of what the actual cost per revenue hour for our services. So again, you see that we're, you know, we're the bargain in year one and then we continue to see prices climb. We're still doing better than First Transit.
Why? Why do we climb?
We climb. I do have a slide later that shows it, but it's.
What you can wait, Andy, you can wait.
It's okay, it's wages and PERS. Yeah, is what it comes down to. Our insurance costs are pretty high, too, as, you know, as part of the overall cost, but they don't rise as quickly as PERS. So Tyler did include a 30% increase per year in PERS. I will come back to that, but thank you for asking.
I feel like I kept wanting you to flatten the curve.
Well, I wanted to flatten the curve, too. And I will say, I, so I, as you know, I did really want to try to be able to, I, I expected costs to come in high. First Transit's cost actually don't surprise me and MV's costs are probably about right. So the one of the things when I did propose to you and prepare you that I wanted to see what it costs to bring it in-house is the quality of service that you get when it is in-house is, is really good. I, I could go on and on tonight about how I feel about my department right now and what has happened in this department for the past four months. I've had Muna Rustam jump in and become an expert operator, scheduling drivers and figuring out all of the reporting and how it's done and how it can be improved. The Transit Assistant Nancy Payne, she's learned how to be a dispatcher and learned how to schedule. And we were counting fares. I mean, we were, we were doing it all. And in a month's time, we were fully staffed and the people who are here want to be here and they are, they are quality drivers, quality dispatch. The dispatch office was in shambles. It's an amazing team right now. So I, again, it's almost 9:30 at night, so I, I won't go on and on, but I could. So I do want to keep that, I do want you to keep that in mind, that our costs are slightly higher than MV's, but still in, it's, it's not unreasonable. If, if MV's had come in higher, Sandy would be a really good option. But I'll come back to that. So these are the scores of the RFP. And you can see that MV actually won as our highest bidder. Sorry, my computer went to sleep. So MV is actually our highest bidder. Each bidder could have received 110 points. Some of these scores are fairly low. There was one question that I in particular felt most of them completely missed and gave them no points for and it was worth like 20 points. They, we have checked their references and MV does have the best references out of who we've talked to so far as well.
What was that question that you felt like none of them answered?
We asked and we've always asked it in the past for them to outline all of the cost efficiencies that can be discovered or made through one contractor collaborating with Mount Hood Express and SAM. And I believe that since this RFP was put out as a City of Sandy RFP, they did recognize and they did come up with their cost of revenue hour by combining both of our revenue hours, which spreads the cost out. So we did probably get a lower rate from MV because we are two services, but I just think they really didn't highlight all of the savings that can be identified by two separate transit agencies using one contractor. We did ask it of them again in the interview and they did, they did better in the interview. But at that point, for me, it was more clarifying than what was in the RFP. So I will give some highlights of the MV bid because there are a lot of exciting things in their bid. Their structure that they proposed in the RFP is very similar to what we already have at Sandy Transit. And it's also what we recommended. So, you know, they could have changed our staff around or recommended some slight variations, but they did seem to really listen to what we were saying works well at Sandy Transit and structure their proposal around it. They're also, they've been the contractor at Canby Area Transit since 2013. I have been in touch with the director there and I do know they've only seen very modest increases each year at Canby. And Canby is also very similar to SAM. So it's a really good reference and good to know that they're already being successful to service that's very similar to ours. Additionally, the General Manager, sorry, I'm missing an A, at CAT is proposed as part of their transition team and he actually comes with pretty high marks from previous directors who have worked with him. So they, they've all had really good things to say about him. They do give, all of their new operators receive 108 hours of their training, which is higher than anyone else proposed. The existing operators will be provided a refresher and all personnel receive four hours of customer service training. I'm a huge believer in customer service. I think you have to have customer service in every aspect of anything you do. So I really like to see they have a four-hour training about it. Very important to me as well, as you all know, was being sure that our drivers were taken care of and, and there were points included for a demonstration of the benefit package and keeping drivers whole. So you'll see here, they have agreed both in writing in their bid and in their interviews that they will hire the drivers at their current wage. They offer health insurance benefits. They also offer, and no one else did, an in lieu of $400 for those who don't participate. And that actually does keep the drivers whole because that in lieu is included in the driver's pay through Sandy at the moment because we cannot provide that for them. So that's pretty important. They will honor all existing drivers' level, levels of vacation, which was pretty important. These people have not had sick or paid vacation or time off for six months. There is an FSA and EAP and life insurance and holiday pay and they actually also bring the highest match for the 101K, 401K Retirement Program. Finally, I just want to say that also during the interview process, they really demonstrated that they understood how we would operate here. Again, the General Manager did a great job, very responsive to the questions. We were all very impressed with their interview. So back to the City of Sandy, because I did want to explain, since I've explained MV's cost, I do want to explain the assumptions that were included with the finance information from the City of Sandy and they're there on the left and as you can see, about halfway down, not quite, is a 30% increase in PERS in year two and three. And that's reflected on the chart there on the right. You'll see that it's actually right to left with the left being the, the future. But you do see that wages go up and PERS go up pretty significantly right along with it. So that is what happened to Sandy Transit and their cost in year three.
And did you only do a three-year lookout window because that's the, how long the contract is?
Yeah, so the contract's actually two years, so that's why we look at two years. And then, yeah, just for good measure, we threw in a third year.
So Andy, if you, if we were to go with MV, you still have your employees that have to go through the PERS increases and all the rest. Did you calculate that if, if we did go with MV, what that would mean in your own organization and what would that be for the total price? Did you do that or are you gonna talk about that in the future?
So if we go with MV, there won't be PERS because they will be MV's employees and not ours.
But you'll still have PERS employees in yourself and Muna and the rest.
Yeah, so the way, the, thank you, Carl, for pointing that out because when I'm stuck in my own budget and I didn't explain that part very well. So the way our budget is set up, myself and Muna and Nancy are considered admin or administration and our costs are completely separate than the operations end, which is driver's dispatch. They're all included in kind of a separate pool of expense. So they're one line item and then Muna, Nancy and I are a separate line item. So Nancy, Muna and I's cost will probably also likely increase, but it's going to increase whether we go with MV or stay in-house.
But if you went with Sandy, those costs would be part of the administration as well as the, the overhead, correct?
Correct.
So if you did MV, you'd have MV's cost plus yours. If you went with Sandy's, it would, would not be MV, but it would be, be more cost for Sandy, but the total amount would still be less, right?
I don't think so because we would keep them as an operation separate line item. So they would still be a separate pool of employees.
All right.
Yeah.
I think it's good having a two-year contract so that you can look at all of that again and see how everything works and decide, well, I want to stay with this or look at another proposal.
Yes, thank you. So our contracts are two to five years. So for two years, you're locked in and then you negotiate every year after that. Since it's federal funding, after five years, we have to go back out for the RFP process again, whether you're completely happy with what is happening or not. So yes, you're right. And I do hope that we continue each time that we do this process, especially contracting prices have been really on the rise in the past five years. So I, I do hope that in two years, we look at, because we'll negotiate with MV for year three and I hope that we always include City of Sandy cost in there. But I just want to, this slide is pretty important because like I mentioned in my master plan, I was pretty full steam ahead and I'm going to make this work. And I will contract with other agencies to help offset some of our costs. And then COVID-19 hit. So again, it was a bloom. How can I deal with these costs and what can I do to make a difference to reductions of Mount Hood Express service, slight reduction to SAM, increased costs with the cleaning supplies? We don't really know where our revenue stands. The transit expansions that the county had planned may be postponed. And so on and so forth. So I just feel like the safe step forward is to recommend that you authorize City of Sandy to enter contract negotiations with MV. Then I will issue an intent to award and I think my computer just went quiet. Let me try that again. Okay. I will say that MV's proposal has about three pages of what they call items for discussion, which are negotiations, most of which, I don't know why that keeps going black. I'm sorry. Most of their items of discussion are things like, you know, we, we give 60 days to for them to tell us they aren't going to work here anymore or for us to tell them that we no longer want to carry their contract and they would, they're requesting 120. I'm sorry, I'm just going to unshare my screen.
I think it's set on my timer and so it automatically will always go off.
Okay, thank you. So, so I am recommending that we move forward in negotiations, contract negotiations. And then I come back to you May 4th, hopefully with a wonderful contract that is exactly as it was set forth in the RFP and we've all agreed or we revisit this discussion again. I feel like in two years, I also will have a better idea of what the economy looks like, what my revenue streams look like, what's happening in Transit's future.
Great, thank you, Andy. Appreciate it. Looks like you have a question, Jeremy?
Yeah, no, I appreciate all your hard work. I, I don't know if I've ever seen an RP so detailed, in-depth and thoughtful. And I've had my share, not only in council, but in my professional career.
Remember.
Amazing, amazing work, you know, and that, so I appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, some of the, you know, you brought up a few of the things, the two-year contract. I mean, that's what you guys were asking for, wanting to answer that question, but I guess a few of my concerns about that was MV and the other ones alike were that, you know, these are big corporations. And so, you know, getting into a deal with a big corporation, you know, with over 200 cities and government agencies and those type of things and being that small fish in that. You know, we've worked with a small provider and so that's done well for us until recently and then it's what you can come across with a small provider, too. They're more susceptible to some of those things. But, you know, I kind of look at our sewer treatment plant facility type of stuff, getting into contracts with, you know, two of the largest people in the United States that do that type of work or maybe the world. And so I kind of, I'm a little shy about that, especially with the, this kind of face of our community in the transit area, you know, we have a lot of faces. But that's a really big one, as you said, and you talked about the last four months have been quite amazing for what you've got accomplished and what you've done in-house as well as the drivers and the morale. I mean, when morale is low and you're driving the bus and people are on there, I mean, it's pretty, it doesn't just say a lot about that person or the transit, but the whole city as a whole, so. How, how do they feel about, I mean, I know they don't know about all the RFP, I mean, they know about them, but they aren't, you know, reading them and going processing them like you've just shared with us. But I'm sure there's a little bit of anxiety amongst them. In, in the end, we're all fighting for the same pool of drivers really out there. Not like bringing in a big company is going to invent new employees or new people out here in our area. And that was proven with the school district in trying to get a new transit provider, not just them, but several districts around the Clackamas County. So they're all fighting for the same pool of people. What do you think that the opinion is of the workers on that?
So I, I have kept them, they're pretty. They're pretty aware of everything. I've I've had three meetings with them explaining the RFP process. I just sent an email out last Friday about the RFP process and where we stand. And they were aware that I was also looking at the in-house cost. I know there are several of them that were really hoping that that is was the ultimate outcome of this process. And and some of that has to do with just the feeling of being taken care of by someone because things did kind of spiral south for them previously. They are, you're right on, they're very nervous. This is a change for them. Again, though, they they have spent the past six months with without paid vacation or sick leave. So they haven't been very protected, other than me telling them that I'm trying really hard. So I have gotten a couple of thank you emails from them because I did tell them the results of the RFP were that with either company that we went with, they were going to be kept hold, that was in the RFP and in the proposal by the companies. But you're right. I mean, at the end of the day, it's the same drivers that will be here. And so it's who is managing those drivers. That's the ultimate decision that's being made.
It was nice to hear that. At least Canby, I'm familiar with Canby's transit center system a little bit, that someone there locally, one out of the two hundred cities or whatever that was represented by them. But any other ones besides Canby in Oregon that we'd be aware of?
Yeah, so they actually also contract with Salem Chariots. And I believe until recently, they held another contract, but I'm spacing where it was. So they are very well-known in Oregon. They also, again, they did have very good references. Some of them didn't.
Yeah, I can imagine. It's kind of like having hiring Tryment, you know, not dissing on Tryment at all. It's just a massive organization. It would be a massive organization.
Absolutely. I I will say that's another aspect to the two-year is that the contracting world in transit has changed over the past ten or so years in the sense that the, there's just not a lot of profit to be made. So as the economy got better and better, the profit margin for contractors got smaller and smaller because they were paying so much in wages. So the the smaller ones are not that readily available or bidding. I'm actually impressed that we got three bids, to be perfectly honest. I can tell you a story about a different agency that was not happy with their contractor, terminated the contract, put their RFP out, and that contractor was the only one to bid on it again. I did have a conversation with the the state transit division, who did say that they are also aware that as the bigger ones are the ones left in the pool, the cost of having a contractor have raised so much that even though they're putting new money into transit, it's, you know, not adding service, it's paying for contractors. So I don't know what we'll see in two years. Maybe this economy will help straighten some of that out. And maybe in two years, PERS will start to calm down a little bit, and that will be our saving grace, and we can make a decision then.
Okay, any more questions? Are we ready to adopt the transit operations intent or the or the contract? Need a motion?
Not being able to see the document, I don't even know what number this one is, but I moved it. We move of what Andy just told us.
I would second.
The motion by Counselor Exter and a second by Counselor Lee for our transit operations to award their contract to MV.
Intent to award the contract negotiations that we would bring back.
Okay, to enter into contract negotiations with MV. Jeff, will you do a roll call though?
Counselor Peteold.
Yes.
Counselor Smallwood.
Yes.
Counselor Hamblin.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Exner.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Mayor Pollian.
Yes, and thank you, Andy. Appreciate your time tonight and all your time and effort you put into both awards. So thank you, really appreciate it.
Thank you. And I just want to say thank you on behalf of the drivers, too, because those those were questions that showed you care. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to Jordan. I think you're the one that's presenting on Parks and Trails Advisory Board Member Term Updates.
Yeah, and I'll give that honor to Jeff to take us through our next board and commission results of Jeff's review of the terms and the term limits and some of the problems that we're identifying that need to be addressed with our boards and commissions to make them consistent with our council rules and our administrative policies on our boards and commissions. So Jeff, you want to quickly walk us through this staff report?
What do you mean quickly? You don't want to spend a half hour on this?
It is ten to eight, so. Ten to ten, I mean.
Eight?
Okay, well, the saga continues. As you know, staff is looking at the different boards and commissions to make sure that the terms are consistent, accurate, that we have all of the, all of the records consistently. So we already did the planning commission, which seems like a year ago at this point, doesn't it? I think that was only maybe, you know, a month ago or so. Now it's time for the Parks and Parks and Trails Advisory Board. So you have a memo in front of you, laying out a few things. I I'd like to start with, there are some standard provisions for board and commission seat terms across the different advisory boards. So four-year terms, they begin on New Year's Day, they end on New Year's Eve. Members, people are appointed to the seats, right? Rather than, rather than a four-year term that begins whenever they happen to be appointed, it's it's like the city council. There's there's different positions on the board, and you get into one of the slots that has a pre, a pre-designed term beginning and end date. Unfortunately, when we went back through the records, and we'll get to this in a minute, particularly for this board, we didn't really have those records on file in terms of when people were appointed, when their current term ends. A couple of other features of of board and commission terms is that, you know, when you get close to the end of the seats term, the opening is gonna be advertised, there's a process for interviewing applicants, and then it's brought to the council to appoint for the next term. And the other thing that's important is you don't want the entire committee to turn over all at once. So you have staggered cohorts of of seats on the board. So you know, maybe three of them will expire one year, and the other four will expire a different year. So in terms of the Parks and Trails Advisory Board, reviewing the records that we do have, it appears that we we've been a little bit inconsistent in how we've done and how we've appointed people to the board. So, you know, for instance, term beginning and end dates don't appear at all in our records in terms of specific dates. We just have, we we just have names and dates when people were appointed. And, you know, they were appointed with different sorts of language, like in a couple of cases, it said, appoint to a four-year term. It doesn't say when that would end. And some other cases are a little bit different. I don't need to go into all the details. Couple of other issues with this board in particular are you have some people who've been on the board for a long time. And for some of those longer-tenured members, we actually don't have dates at all of when they were first appointed. So that's a problem. So what we did is we went, we we thought that the most prudent path forward would be to start fresh with a new set of term periods. So establish the term periods for the seven seats. That's number one. And then basically fill those slots with the with the members that we have. So assign them to particular seats. So you see on the memo, what we're proposing right now are that Kathleen Walker, Susan Drew, and Michael Weinberg would be would be appointed to terms that would end at the end of this calendar year. And then the other three current members, John Robinson, Makoto Lane, and Sam Schreier, they are the, they're the more recent appointees. They would get the terms that end at the end of twenty twenty-one. And seat seven is currently vacant. So that's in that second matrix that you can see on that memo. Now, one question that has come up when we've looked at this is why, why twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one? Why not twenty twenty and then twenty twenty-two? So that's it's two years apart. And the answer to that question is it's actually in the Parks and Trails bylaws that way. And actually, in our city policy that way, it says, the language says that the seats have to turn over on odd and even years. I don't know why it was done that way, but that's 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 our practice. That's what the planning commission does, too. And actually, these term dates would fit, would match the planning commission term dates exactly, which there are pluses and minuses to that. The advantage of that is you can get it all done at what you could just have one big effort of we need to recruit a bunch of positions, we need to do all the interviews, let's get it over with. So that that's what this would accomplish. So the recommended motion is, and I've just lost my page, the the recommendation is that the council assign these fixed staggered four-year term periods as shown in the in the staff report and and appoint the current board members to those seats as proposed in the staff report. So I hope that makes sense. I know it's a little bit Byzantine, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions, Carl?
So do all of our committees, and I think, I'm trying to remember what the art commission was. I thought some of them are twenty and twenty-two. They're not all odd and even. Are we gonna run into some, we, I don't know if there's anything strange about it. I'm a little concerned about having all of our committees and the members on the same timeframe and have to go through the list and all that sort of stuff. So it may be actually a good idea to have them different, but do you know what's like? And those sorts of committees, too?
It's a good question. The the answer to that question is actually that the policy I was referring to that says odd and even years actually only applies to advisory boards and not to commissions. So that's why the Arts Commission has a separate rule for that. And their bylaws are different, and that's not inconsistent with the policy. It's a little bit interesting the way that worked out, but that's that's how it currently reads.
Okay, alright.
I do, I do, I do think it's a little confusing when people are out there looking at boards and those type of things. And you know what the city council is, you know, and you know what other ones are. And it just makes sense to have it every two years, some people coming on and off versus having it back-to-back and then having three years not. And then, so I I find it confusing for the public maybe more so than anything else. And then you got, you could possibly have a very not as experienced grouping there with the two years and then get, you know, so. I don't know. I, that was gonna be my number one question I had for you, is why not twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two? But, I mean, you explained it, but that was my only comment.
Yeah, in that regard, Jeremy, I think we have enough turnover. It seems like, just thinking about people who come in and come go. Some quit a year in, some quit six months in. We have somebody in our commission that actually really wasn't doing very well, trying to keep up in about three months or so. So it's kind of a, it depends on how long that particular individual wants to stick around or doesn't. So we have some immaturity and growth issues all through the organizations.
So I think we want to adopt all of these. I think that we like where they're slated in. The only question is, is do we like it at twenty and then turn over at twenty-one? Or do we want to go twenty twenty and then twenty twenty-two? Where's people landing on that question? It's getting late.
I I kind of like how it sits right now. You know, I thought Jeff did a good job of explaining how it's set up. This particular board has got some some depth to it because it's got several members who've been on it for a very long time. And all of the new members, all three of the new members are very seasoned people with parks. These aren't people who have a big learning curve or have to try and figure things out. So I I feel personally, as their council representative, pretty, pretty solid on on doing it this way and 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 moving forward, but.
Thank you, Lori. I saw Counselor Schultz and then Counselor Lee.
Yeah, I think if it's in our bylaws, we need to stick with that. I would be open to a conversation later about changing that, but as long as that's how it's written, as Jeff has stated, I think we need to stick with as it's written.
Thank you. Counselor Lee?
And I was going to say the same thing because we'd really have to change the bylaws before we vote it if we don't do it the way it's proposed.
I agree. And now I'm gonna go to Counselor Exner, and then when he's done, I'm gonna beg somebody for a motion.
I'm all, I'm bored with all what we've talked about so far, other than like to add that council to a message that the council has the authority to fill or not fill with an incumbent. We need to look at the, the good of the committee and the good of the city to, we wouldn't just automatically take an incumbent and ride them over to the next term. It's just a message. Wouldn't be something that I was thinking about.
Yeah, for all, important. For all our boards and commissions right now, you know, that's been, I think, at least, listed our council goal setting almost a year and a half ago, right, is that this was something that we wanted to do with all our boards and commissions, is kind of straighten them out, add a little bit of structure like we are here, and then go through a review process each time the ones up, just to do our due diligence for the community. So, okay, great, looking for that motion, begging for it.
I will move to accept the board, Parks and Trails Advisory Board, as written by Jeff.
And I'll second.
And a motion by Counselor Schultz, a second by Counselor Smallwood. Jeff, will you please take us through the roll though?
Counselor Peteold.
Yes.
Counselor Smallwood.
Yes.
Counselor Hamblin.
Yes.
Counselor Lee.
Yes.
Counselor Exner.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Mayor Pollian.
Yes, city manager report. You're muted, Jordan.
Oh, good. I'm glad you didn't hear what I just said.
Want me to repeat it for you?
It was gonna take about an hour here. So really quick, just a quick update on our coronavirus situation. You know, not a whole lot of changes, but a couple of positive things. The library holds service, the curbside pickup service is going very well. They're filling those slots and getting the the appointments. And I think the the community feedback has been really strong. So thank you for giving us direction, allowing us to do that. I think the the library staff are really appreciate be able to provide that service, too. You saw the governor released a framework for reopening Oregon, and that's on her her website. Kind of the the five points that she outlines about declining the growth of the active cases and, you know, the hospitals having the capacity for surges and equipment. And of course, the one that, you know, I've been wondering about is, you know, when do we start seeing more increased testing and tracing by the counties to isolate those cases? But so that that's out there circulating, has us starting to think about the transition for us and what protocols we need to have in place for our organization when we get closer to bringing staff back to work and making sure our workplace is safe and healthy for both the public and our staff. The question that's come up, and I heard it tonight, too, is, you know, how is our budget being impacted from this? And we will start getting more numbers here in a couple of weeks as we start to go through the rest of May and see where we end up with revenue. But really, it's, there's a couple of main places where we're gonna see impacts. One, obviously, is gas taxes. If you've driven down the highway lately, there's a lot of speeding or there's speeding. If you've driven down the highway lately, there's a lot of speeding or there's speeding cars, but not a lot of them. So not a lot of the gas being sold. So in the near term, we'll see an impact there. The other one that is that I'm looking at right now is impacting Andy and her department with the with payroll taxes for transit. The good news there is with the CARES Act, rural transit agencies are being fed funding to sort of backfill the loss of revenue from, you know, not having as much ridership and doing things like we're doing is waiving fares. So that can be applied, which is great. It's a kind of a use it or lose it sort of program, if I'm not mistaken. But we're we're lucky that we have that. So and then other things that we're watching, obviously, is how this will impact future purse liabilities too with the market changes over the last month or so. So we'll have more, you know, a bigger update as we get, you know, the numbers coming in into our accounts. We have a clearer picture on what's going on there. The other thing, just real quick, was on like city events. We're still in this wait and see mode of whether mass gatherings will be allowed. And so we haven't made, you know, pulled the plug hard on a lot of our summer events, but we're keeping planning sort of to a minimal and just holding dates. And, you know, if there's contracts that we need to do for like having a concert in, say, in August or something like that, we're we're doing, but we'll be prepared to either go or no go. And kind of reassessing that every month. So like on May first, we'll take a look at it and then June first. And then something that did come up, I think this was an idea from the mayor we heard on a call with the county that another city is doing is purchasing gift cards to distribute to the police department and say, one of our nonprofits like Sandy Helping Hands to give out to local community members that, you know, need support. So this would be gift cards that we would purchase from local businesses here in Sandy. And so, one, I mean, there's two benefits to this. It helps people, you know, get food and get you know, supplies from local businesses and also supports our local business. And I I was going to suggest something very minimal that I can probably find in our administrative budget here. It's just buying, you know, five hundred dollars worth of gift cards from local businesses and then distribute, you know, half of those to Sandy Helping Hands and half of those to the police department. So see head nods, like that'd be something special that we can do. I mean, a lot of it's a gesture. I understand that. But I think there's a lot of businesses that would love, you know, someone to stop buying by a hundred dollars with the gift cards to help support them, so.
I would only add on to maybe consider the Action Center too, since they're all about food and triaging a lot of their services.
Oh, right, right. Yeah. Sounds great. And then real quick, so wastewater, there's been a lot going on behind the scenes with that. We're going to get a report maybe this week on the recycled water opportunities. We've had consultants out there reaching out to property owners that are going to be within a certain amount of distance from our new water, recycled water or M B A, M B R water from our new treatment plant. So we'll get sort of the a clear picture on what the potential is for recycling that water and using that water in the area. And then I'll be meeting soon with the consultants and with the owner of Roslyn Lake. Have that conversation continue. And then we have a third meeting with D Q this week, the discussion, discuss the M A O. And this will be a little more technical as we bring a little bit more to the table on some some things regarding timelines and schedule. And also sort of how the permitting system works and how engineering works too, so that their regulatory officials kind of understand. They know how how we're working. But, you know, some good things have come out of, you know, this work with with D Q is, you know, we've brought on owners rep now. We have Murray Smith under contract and having a team in place now has been really helpful for us to kind of get everybody on the same page in terms of a schedule. We've actually reengaged with F C S. We had some money left in that contract to look at our rate study. So be able to revise that model and look at our projections, gearing up to do another W F I application. And then having, you know, the technical staff with the owners rep be able to support us in this M A O renegotiation. Has been pretty helpful. And then finally, three sixty second, the survey work is about complete now and they're getting started on the environmental. So that's continuing. I mentioned gas taxes earlier, but we do have the the funds in our street fund to continue on with the design work and the engineering work. So very important to have that in place because when we do bounce back and people are driving and spending money on gas, we'll have the design complete and we're hoping the schedule isn't too much impacted by any decrease in the state and local gas taxes. So I'm moving forward with that. That's it for me. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Jordan. We'll go to councillor and committee reports. Councillor Schultz, your first up there. I did want to, in case Andy jumps off the call. You see over Jeremy's right shoulder, he has your your Sam, Sam Bale. So I just wanted to make sure that you were you were aware of that. Oh, oh, two of them. Nice. I like it. All right, Bethany.
Yeah, the mayor only had one, so I had to do two.
All right, I like it.
My kids play with the little Sam flashlights all the time, so I am all set in on this. No committee reports other than the library board's not been meeting and the task force is on hold. So nothing big for me tonight.
Right, thank you. I'm trying to go in the same order as we always do. Exner, you're up.
Real quickly, because I know it's it's not quarter to eight, it's almost ten thirty, so. Our commission met Wednesday and although I missed it for a whole bunch of technical reasons, I did watch the the recording of it. By the way, good job about putting it on YouTube. It's so it's out there. Probably the biggest thing that I wanted to kind of bring forward is that they're having to delay things like the mural celebrations. If you've noticed that the one in front of the city hall is up now and they put the sealer on it and they finished the ceiling of the Roger Cook one over on the A E C. So a lot of celebration things have been kind of just holding off and waiting for something to happen, if it ever does happen. It's kind of a, it's too bad. We have such great things going on and we can't celebrate them. We can't get together and look at them and walk out and just say, ooh and ah, so it's really kind of sad that way. But just to know that those kind of things are going along and doing pretty well that way. There was a note from a school kid that came up through here and I don't, mayor, if you're going to talk about it or not, I was just trying to check to find out what they were asking for. And when I read it here a week ago or so, I thought, well, that's really a something we should talk about, but I can't recall some of these things like our children who are graduating from high school and have no celebration, nothing really to take on. I'll be find a way. And I know they're trying to try to do a virtual tour. I've heard of other cities doing things like taking a picture of them and putting them up on the the banners and stuff, but we've got three hundred and fifty kids graduating from our high school this year. That's kind of a big thing.
He was gonna give an update on that or or he was researching it.
Oh, good. Okay, I'll let that one go then. And I think that's it for me.
Thank you. Councillor Lee.
Yes, the Resiliency Planning Committee is meeting this week. We had an interview Emily and I did last week with the people who are offering the grant. And they will have information by the middle of May as to whether we might be an awardee. The other thing is I'm on the County Budget Planning Committee. We meet a couple of times in April and then three days in May. But I wanted to report that they're looking at about a two percent loss in revenue. So I imagine that will make things a little more difficult in the next few months, but we'll get through it. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councillor Hamblin.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Councillor Smallwood.
Yeah, so kind of along the lines of of what Carl was talking about with the high school graduation. That particular student wanted to, they were looking at, I believe, lining up down Highway twenty six. If that doesn't work out, you know, I'd really like to collaborate on some ideas for these guys. You know, I think there's mile markers in life that that we all have. And I think your high school graduation is one of those. So I would really, really hate for these guys to miss out on that. And even if it's maybe one of these local airports, maybe we can do something, you know, maintain social distancing but but afford these kids an opportunity to have something that they can do. And be recognized. I think it's important.
So I, real quick, just just on that issue, you know, I I forwarded that email on to Chief Roberts and on to Jordan. And I I agree, right? Those were my sentiments in that email.
Yeah.
But I do think it's important for us to remember that, I mean, graduations is a school district event. It's a school board like driven event, right? And so I want to be outstanding community members to the school district. And if they want to have a parade or something, I want our police to participate in that, right? And I want our city services to try to like make that happen. But I I think it's the school district that should be driving this thing and coming to us and us working to implement, you know, their collective vision and plan than us driving this. Because, you know, I mean, only a small city, not small segment, only a certain segment of their populace, their student body is our constituents, right? There's a lot of other communities that feed into that. So I just wanted to throw that out there because I, we're really busy in the COVID nineteen staff, so are they. But, you know, I mean, I just sometimes our residents, I feel like, get a little misdirected as to what is a city responsibility versus a school district responsibility. And I think graduation's more of a school district.
So maybe a quick question. Jordan, has the school district or Aaron reached out to you in regards to this at all?
Yeah, I mean, they have, they're they had communications go out last week about what they're planning for graduation. This is not going to be a school sanctioned event, so that's that's clear. And, you know, I mean, obviously, the chief and I do have questions about it. And, you know, some concerns, obviously, safety and things like that. And I think the mayor brings up a good point about, you know, what is a city event and what, you know, constitutes a city event that's sponsored and we're endorsing? And what's the liability that goes with that? And there's, you know, some more technical issues too about what if we even could get a permit for such a an event? Or if we just don't. So who, I mean, this is obviously a couple of months away, right? The landscape can be completely different. And I think if if it was, the school district might change plans and say, great, you know, we're going to throw a parade or we're going to have a graduation now. So there's still those unknowns too. But I think, I mean, I think it is healthy to have sort of a distinction between school and city and, you know, events that are obviously for a population that is much bigger than the city population in terms of the student body especially.
Aaron reached out to you?
Yeah, yeah, in, yeah, Eric. So we talk weekly and then we talked about this last week too.
Okay, so maybe just expressing our interest in supporting them.
Hence my statement when I started this about collaborating.
Yeah, sure. And yeah, and the thing is, is even if they don't want to move along, that's fine, right? And if it's a, if it's a student led effort and they approach us, I say, let's work with them. It doesn't just have to be school district centric, right?
I guess that was my impression of the email was that this was a student reaching out to city council asking for some help.
By the school district. The school district isn't, isn't, this is not a school district event and they're not, you know, behind it.
I mean, yeah, I I I guess I am here for us to collaborate, but I I think it needs to be a lead event by students or parents or the school district or or somebody else that we're here to supplement and help make happen, but not take on ourselves. This might might too sound, sorry.
That's all I got.
Thank you, Lori. Jeremy.
Yeah, so right on the top of my list is what you guys were just chatting about, so I thought I'd just kind of wait a second. I I'm in full support of helping out, supplementing a, something for the high school graduation. We are the hometown, even if you live in Boring or by Cottrell or, you know, both you and I both stand, lived outside the city limits growing up. And this is our hometown. So, you know, in that, if it's not Highway twenty six, we have other places, an airport, the bluff road and other things we can do for that as we help and we can supplement that. Because this is the hometown from everyone from government camp to Boring. And I think we should do something. The econ grant thing, as you all well know, we we pushed that forward. We'll be doing that this next week. So thank you for doing that. And a big shout out to Carl and Jan as well as David in our meetings and getting this through. It's a, it's been neat to see it kind of processed through on that. So I'm excited to go through another round of evaluating those and getting that out to our business owners. Just to internet with schools, I know I'm working with the county and getting all over the county, but also in Sandy here and other places. Because we have a digital divide between the rural areas of our our area outside our city limits. And so a lot of people may not be able to afford internet or can't get internet. And so trying to kind of extend that in some more key places where they can come and park in a parking lot or something like that, staying socially distanced to be able to fill out for unemployment or fill out for some of these other things is more and more spots that had free internet don't exist anymore. Or just to do schoolwork, I know we had three kids on the internet today on video conferencing is my, well, is myself and, you know, we have fiber, but the outsider city limits, there's a lot of people that still don't have that. So we've been working on that and thanks, Greg, for working with that in the county as well. So just shout out to the staff and all they're doing. Appreciate it.
Thank you. I'll try to be brief tonight. It's getting late. First, just continue to be proud of our community and city staff for how we're responding to the crisis. Just finished another successful virtual meeting tonight. So thank you. There's a lot of work and logistics that go into these, so appreciate what everybody's doing. Sad news with the Sandy Mountain Festival announcing over the last week that they're going to have to cancel their event for the summer. Just too many logistics involved with carnival and the vendors and the parade. Too many moving parts with not knowing what's the future being is uncertain as it is. So long lasting tradition in this community. And one of the reasons I mentioned the chamber at our work session today is their music fair feast during that time being, you know, over ninety percent of their receipts annually. So gonna have to have a lot of discussions as a community, how we prop up our different service organizations. And of course, we didn't have our Kiwanis, our annual Kiwanis Easter egg hunt in Mining Park on Saturday, which is heartbreaking. Thank you. It's Jeremy mentioned to our ad hoc committee members and staff for our local economic relief fund that we get to go ahead to tonight. Very proud of that program and excited to see it get implemented. Jordan mentioned a little bit ago, we had a county chair, mayor, city manager, administrator meeting earlier this week where we got the gift card idea. I I think it's could be a great program that it fills both needs, right? Our most vulnerable in our community that are really hurting right now as well as our local businesses. So excited to see that get implemented. So with that, on that meeting, it was something I was pretty aggressive about saying that I'm going to say here tonight. And that is, I think we need to start taking substantial moves to reopen our local main street economy. When I had a lot of conversations with mayors throughout the rural part of the state, as well as the governor's office. You know, I've also actually just this morning had a conversation with someone that's involved in the industry of trying to get these tests out there to find out who's already developed immunity to this. The fact is, is as these tests are starting to be more prevalent and get out there, we're seeing, especially on the West Coast, there may be a tendency towards herd immunity already. It may have been here a lot longer than we have known. When you look at the cases and talk to professionals in the medical arena locally, the hospitals are not getting to the capacity that they thought they were going to get. You're seeing a lot of these temporary centers not be as needed. Equipment is catching up. And what I'm hearing from the governor's office is that they're talking about a regional approach to reopening. That was just like Friday, what the word was. And I talked to the mayor of Primeville today and it sounds like that's still the plan. What worries me about that council is that we are in the metro region area, right? We're not technically in the metro boundary. We're not technically in the metro boundary, but we are in Clackamas County, which is kind of the the big three there. So we may, as we see this unfold, depending on what your personal feelings are, if they're anywhere near mine. We may need to be strongly advocating for Senator Chuck Thompson or Representative Anna Williams, people in the governor's office, that we want to be included in more of the rural regional opening than the metro. Because I'm worried that the Portland metro area could be several months still until we allow our businesses to open. And when you look at that local main street economy out there right now, I'm just not seeing it, we're hearing about the level of need out there in our healthcare arena to justify the hurt. And and quite honestly, we're we're going to lose people to health conditions and stuff as a result of a bad economy. There's there's numbers out there with every percentage of unemployment, you lose several hundred thousand Americans. So we need to be contemplating some of those numbers as well. So that's my part on that. Development, what's this last item? Oh, so I was reading the development services report and even today, in some of our work sessions, we're and with this economic development relief fund, we're going again to the urban renewal fund. So I'm once again going to remind council, I want, and we need a strategic budget for that fund. Because I worry, reading these reports of these small improvements, plus how we keep dipping into it. A future council is going to wake up and really need that fund and might not have it available. We got to get a lot more purposeful and strategic with that fund, especially as our budgets are tightening right now in the economic downturn. So that's all I had to say tonight, everybody. Please individually get back to me on some of your thoughts, if you haven't already, on reopening COVID nineteen and all that. I want to start having some real conversations about people's personal feelings on that. And you don't have to agree with me, let's have open dialogue, but let's also start talking about timelines and comfort levels and what you're comfortable with and what you're not, because I just want to build a temperature take.
Sam, can I add one thing to that since since you're on that? I've spoken to a lot of business owners here in the last week, local business owners, variety of businesses. And a lot of them who are either, some of the restaurants who are either doing takeout, health facilities, athletic club and so on, are really taking some some very how do I want to put it? I think very progressive steps in being able to redesign their model to allow for social distancing, HEPA filtration, cleaning methods, training their staff and things like that. So just kind of along the lines of where the mayor is going. And definitely in support of looking at our local economy and getting these guys, getting these guys moving. Just wanted to let you guys know that that these guys are thinking about that and being very proactive in in what they need to do to get open.
Thank you.
Really appreciate all that they're doing. But I think one thing we have to keep in mind is we are part of metro because our people are going there to work every day. So finding that right balance is really going to be important.
I mean, that is kind of my opinion on it too, though, right? Is since if the metro region's not opening and our folks aren't going to work every day. We're, they're not interacting with those companies at those jobs anymore anyway. So all we're doing is hurting our our local main street, you know? I mean, and I think if we look at reopening, we can every couple of weeks, you know, review our practices and see how we're doing as far as testing and all that.
Yeah, testing is so important.
Yeah, vital, vital to get that going. All right, with that, I'll go, long meeting tonight. Good job, everybody. Thank you for your efforts tonight. I'll I'll call this meeting to an end.
Good night.
Have a good night.